Okay, we are opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, August 6th. And I want to start off with a couple of announcements. Tomorrow, the Brookline Teen Center is holding a car wash from 1:00 until 3:00 in the afternoon at their location, 40 Aspenwall Avenue. The car wash is to raise funds for the ongoing renovation of the building. And you can tour the new developing teen center while your car is being cleaned. Sounds like a good twofer to me. Just a reminder, Farmer's Market will be open again on Thursday from 1:00 p.m. until sunset. And again, there will be pop-up vendors at Two Brookline Place in Brookline Village on Saturday from noon until 5:00 p.m., a great variety of different things, including crafts and food and other interesting goodies. Are there announcements that anybody else would like to make?
Well, I just want to add that I think the teen center is also having a fundraising event tomorrow night, which they've got...
That is true. You want to talk about it?
Well, I don't know too much about it, but they are seeking a temporary wine and malt beverage license, so it sounds like it'll be...
Well, how about this? There's a fundraiser on Wednesday from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Yes, I assume the teens are not going to be doing the...
Probably not the teens, no.
And they're at the teen center, so I know they're working very hard. I mean, I think it's actually been a wonderful effort to, with an almost, with private money, to get this teen center up and running. And I wish we had the public funds to give them, but we don't, so I think they've just done a tremendous job with all their fundraising. And I would urge people to either go to the events, or you can go online and donate to the teen center.
Absolutely. Everyone's encouraged. Okay, other events, if anybody wants to mention. Anybody want to remind people about the golf tournament? No, apparently not.
The 113th U.S. Amateur Championship will be at the Country Club from August 10th to the 18th. The practice rounds begin on August 10th and August 11th. Play starts on August 12th, and the championship match is on August 18th. So it will be more than a week of golf by the best amateur players in the United States, and I think also from foreign countries.
Thank you.
So a lot of, a lot of very good amateur golf at the Country Club.
And I'm going to follow up with a very different kind of announcement. The State Department of Public Health and the Brookline Department of Public Health are reminding us about West Nile virus and the fact that it is now the season, that some mosquitoes have been identified, not that we are aware of them in Brookline at this time. We've applied Larvicide to catch basins and wetland areas, and we're doing our best, taking preventive action. But the reminder is, it is the season for mosquitoes, and in particular, the risk of West Nile. So there is a recommendation that people should use mosquito repellent when outdoors, particularly between dusk and dawn. And the most effective kind contains D-E-T, although people are not recommended to use that product on infants. So this is sort of, everybody be alert, don't let any West Nile mosquitoes bite you if you can avoid it. And that's, I think, the last of my announcements, but we do have some additional update information. Mr. Kleckner, would you like to tell us about where we stand with our 40B?
Yes, Madam Chairman and members of the board. We are, I have an August 30th deadline to make comments to Mass Development on the Hancock Village Chapter 40B development. So unfortunately, we were unable to get a consent to an additional extension, so we really need to consider this during the month of August during what is really the heaviest vacation period unfortunately for the town. But I did, we did post a notice, and I'd like to read from it. It's a Notice of the Board of Selectmen Discussion of Hancock Village Chapter 40B Proposal. At its meeting on Tuesday evening, August 13th, 2013, the Board of Selectmen intends to discuss the Chestnut Hill Realty's application to Mass Development for site eligibility on its proposed Chapter 40B housing development at Hancock Village. At this meeting, the Board expects to hear from its staff and special counsel on changes from the prior withdrawn submission by Chestnut Hill Realty and how this latest development proposal conforms to Chapter 40B design guidelines and how it impacts the neighborhood and community. The Board intends to consider input from the public at this meeting, including but not limited to the Hancock Village Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, the Preserve Brookline Group, and the South Brookline Neighborhood Association. So the Board of Selectmen will file its formal comments to Mass Development on this application by the August 30th, 2013 deadline.
Thank you.
Can I just add that if people are going on vacation, it would be good maybe if they can email comments in. This plan, like the former plan, relies on building quite heavily in the buffer zone right next to the adjacent streets, our neighborhood streets, which I know was a great concern to many people that live in that area. So they should, they should get their comments in whatever way they're able to.
Yes, Selectman Wyszynski?
Is there any information that can be posted on the town website to give folks an idea of the nature of the proposal?
Sure, I think the proposal is posted there, but I'll verify that and make sure any other information that we've developed is on there.
Yeah, can a link to it be placed right on the homepage of the town?
Yes, that certainly makes things easier. I totally agree. Other comments about this 40B item? Then I'm going to give an update on the activities of the B-Space Committee, which is looking into options to provide additional classrooms for our increasing enrollment. Two weeks ago, or actually a week ago, on July 29th, the committee heard from the consultants, HMFH Architects, who gave additional information to help us identify school sites that could have additional additions, physical building additions constructed on them. And last night, the committee began the process of narrowing options for further consideration. And at the end of the meeting, the committee had identified possible further consideration for expansion at present kindergarten, K through 8, kindergarten through 8 elementary school sites, plus assuming there would need to be expansion at Brookline High School. So the K through 8 sites are Devotion, Lawrence, Pierce, Driscoll, Lincoln, New Lincoln, and Heath. Also would consider the possibility of a new 7th grade through 12th grade high school, which would also mean renovation at the existing campus to accommodate 7th through 12th grade, possibly expanding to two high schools for grades 9 through 12 at the high school campus and another location. The possibility of establishing early childhood centers at locations not currently identified for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And finally, a new kindergarten through 8th grade school if there is no other feasible option. The sites that will be considered include existing school sites for kindergarten through 8th grade, the Baldwin Sewell Recreation Center, Lars Anderson Park, and Old Lincoln School, either for high school expansion or possibly the last resort if the, all other options fail. It would be possibly a new kindergarten through 8th school. The B-Space meeting committee will meet again on Monday, the 12th, and take up these options for further consideration. But there are two of my colleagues who also are members of the committee, so if you have anything to add, please do.
I think you said it all, Chairman.
Okay. I think that's...
You might want to mention some of the options that were taken off the table.
I certainly could try to do that.
Or at least the motion where some of the sites were...
We agreed to remove from consideration Amory Park, the Mass Association for the Blind Location, two properties owned by Boston University on Worthington and Dummer Streets, and the Lynch Center property. We also agreed not to consider grade configurations for an 8th and 9th grade school, or a single grade school for either 8th grade or 6th grade, and agreed not to consider a combined, what was being called a super K through 8, which would expand the district between Pierce School and New Lincoln to include the Old Lincoln School property as a combined large kindergarten through 8th grade district. All of those were rejected. Did I leave anything out?
You might want to say, "We agreed not to further consider," because all those things had been considered.
Right, right, right. Those are now no longer on the list of possibilities. And also decided not to consider a new kindergarten through 8th grade at the Baldwin Sewell Recreation Site. And I think that's everything. So, but it's not done yet. And I will confess now to being ever so slightly spaced out. Okay, moving on to the calendar unless there's any other comments. The first is the minutes from two meetings, the 9th and the 23rd. Are there additions and corrections to the minutes from members of the board? My goodness me, that's, that's a first, I think. Then I will approve that we, move, sorry, move that we approve the minutes from July 9th and July 23rd. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Abstaining on the 23rd, but aye on the 9th.
Okay, and Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And next, oh, actually, yes, let's move forward into miscellaneous. And the first item is a grant from the Motion Picture and Television Fund for the Library. Ms. Goff?
Good evening. This is a grant for a series of children's programming at the library from the Motion Picture and Television Fund.
I can't imagine why we'd turn this down. Any comments from members of the board?
Nope.
Then I move that we graciously accept a grant of $1,317.48 from the Motion Picture and Television Fund to be used for a series of musical programs for children at the Brookline Public Library. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. And then we have a number of contracts and change orders. Do we want to hold any of these for questions and discussion, or can we group some of them?
We have to figure out on the committees of seven.
Oh, sorry, yes, we should do that. I actually have asked for volunteers and...
I'm willing to take municipal service center.
Yep, that's the one I have already...
That's the one I...
But I certainly don't mind Selectmen Daley.
I will, I'll take roof replacement in that case.
Then you can have roof replacement. I actually, you were not available at the time when I had that...
Oh, did somebody else already volunteer for roof?
No, I don't think so. I don't think anybody else wants it, so please do. Daley for roof replacement? And Goldstein for municipal services.
Hang on one second. We'll run a little constitution.
Then I'll do it.
See, that was actually, we were trying to be kind to you, Selectmen Daley.
I appreciate it, yes.
You might want to remember that at some point.
I think Selectman Wyszynski will take that one, and I will certainly volunteer for the next one, whatever it may be.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Okay, so we have Chapter 90 reimbursements. I think that's not very controversial, because it's pretty much done. But then some new contracts. Actually, I have a question about Walnut Street, item F.
If you weren't going to, I was.
Okay, well, then we'll hold F. Any other questions? And actually, H, in part because it was rebid, and I can't remember why.
I did have a question about J.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure, we have M, and we have a couple of things of roadwork which are near the Country Club, and I wanted to make sure they weren't going to go on right during this amateur golf thing.
Amateur, right.
So M was one, but I think we also have, oh, it's the, it's the noise request on Horse Town Circle was the other one I was considering.
Oh, right, right, right. That's actually separately, that's on the calendar as a public hearing.
Yeah.
We're going to do, take that one up later. Okay, then it seems to me that we've agreed to hold F and H.
J was one of them.
J and M.
Could we, since L is not defined specifically in the calendar, could we just, if somebody is here, just hold it and get a definition of what's going to be done and when?
Okay. How about we ask our questions, and then we'll vote the ones that we are holding, and then we'll vote the rest of them in a group. Is that acceptable with everybody? All right, in that case, the first question has to do with Walnut Street improvements. I believe, Mr. Ditto, you're probably the person for most of these, except I think Ms. Gallantyne is H, school grounds maintenance.
Correct.
So my question about the Walnut Street is that since it has most recently been heavily dug up, are we now going to restore it to its beauty and pristine and travelable conditions?
Yes, we are.
And starting when?
Just a word of caution. National Grid was relaying their gas main and services on the lower end of Walnut Street, basically from the far end of Lincoln School down to High Street. They still have a small section to relay from Cypress Street heading towards, to the school, a couple hundred feet that has to be relayed, and the services have to be replaced. So that work is still ongoing. Once that's completed, and if you award and execute this contract, Mario Susi will be in there to do the wholesale reconstruction in two weeks. And he anticipates completing that project by the end of September.
I had a question about this project, too, because I noticed that you mentioned raised crosswalks.
Yes.
And I know the last, there was a substantial amount of traffic calming work done on Walnut, and then I started hearing from some people that maybe there had been too much, too many signs and stops and this and that. And so I'm wondering if the neighborhood is on board with whatever is proposed here. Has there, has transportation or somebody held a public hearing on this?
We did. We had a neighborhood meeting in February.
Okay.
Just to get their feeling on this whole traffic calming issue, and whether they wanted to just replace what's in there in kind, or else go through a complete traffic calming study again. And they voted to replace it in kind, looking at several items that they had concerns for. And for instance, they were concerned about site distances, coming down upland and being able to see either way. And it was a legitimate complaint, and we adjusted, adjusted the parking spaces to give the people coming down upland a little more sight distance. And we agreed to minimize the warning signs as much as we could, similar to what we did on Pond Ave. So they were all on board with that, and basically that allowed us to get the street done this year.
And will the raised crosswalks be of the type that were used on Pond Avenue, which I believe everyone universally believes are actually better than any other ones around town?
Yep, that's our new design for that type of crosswalk.
Right, okay.
Raised crosswalk.
Selectman Wyszynski?
The timing of this seems to coincide with the start of school. What's the, where does the project start and end? Does it go all the way up to the Lincoln School?
It goes from Cypress all the way down to High.
So it misses the, right by the Lincoln School?
Oh, the New Lincoln School.
Yeah, yeah, that's the new one.
Yeah, we're not going on that side of the street.
Yeah, the old Lincoln School is not occupied.
At this time, no.
Really?
Rare. Okay, and do we have a reasonable expectation that actually, it looks to me like six weeks plus or minus will get them through the work?
We will write, get in touch with Mario Susi and ask him for a schedule, and they'll be a more definitive of what I'm saying up here.
And I hope that information will be provided to the butters on Walnut Street.
Absolutely.
And I would also suggest that the school be notified of the schedule so they can publicize any impacts, because it's a major car and walking route to and from school. Do you anticipate street closures during this period?
Absolutely.
Can the closures be made to accommodate the school schedule? So is there any chance of that? Meaning the closures, like, you know, allowing the travel to school? Or will the closures be for multi-days?
Um...
Because you're going to have a big issue there.
Yeah, it's a trade-off. You know, if we close the street down and give the contractor a, you know, a full eight to 10 hours, whatever he can fit in his schedule, as opposed to starting him at 9:00 and shutting him off at 3:00. So there's a little bit of a balancing act there, and maybe we can take a look at it the first week and see what, what works best for everybody.
Well, just an observation, as a person who crossed High Street many times during the National Grid work, their detour signs were not very well placed and clear, although I will say, thanks to our public safety people, the police were, most, most of the times I crossed were actually directing traffic, which helped enormously. But you should be aware of the very short queuing distances crossing Route 9 between the intersection at Walnut Street. And if there's going to be some kind of interruption there, somebody needs to be in a position to, I guess what I'm trying to say, that there were frequently times when the light was red and there was no traffic because of the blockade, but there was no one saying, "You can go." And so there were queues that went back up High Street all the way nearly back to Chestnut. And I do not think for this six-week period, we want another experience like that. Because, and particularly when school is now going to be in session, which has not been true actually during the National Grid period.
Yep.
Next item, actually, while we've got you there, why don't we just do the other street ones? J, micro-surfacing?
My question about this was, I'm always a little concerned when we get just one, one bid on a project.
Correct, yeah, correct.
And is there, are these the only people that do this kind of work? Or why are we writing our requests for proposals?
There are other companies that do this work, not as local as Seal Coating, Inc., and I shared your concern. And that being said, we had this contract last year, this company, and the price that they bid last year was $4.25 per square yard. And this year, they dropped their price to $3.90 per square yard. So I felt comfortable that that's a fair price. And you can actually go on to...
Compete with themselves, I guess that's good.
Yeah, but in reality, there are other companies that do it, and you can go on to a website at mass dot that gives the statewide comparison of this type of work, so you can get a feel for whether this is a reasonable figure or not.
And you did that, and this was reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And I gather you were pleased with the work they did under the prior contract?
Yes, this is a great procedure. It's very benign as far as impacting the neighborhood, and actually, we completed last year's contract in a week. And it's, it adds about five to seven years onto the surface of a pavement. So it's, it's a good deal for the money.
Okay, Selectmen Daley, you want to take up L?
Yeah, I just, on the mill and overlay of Clyde and Lee Street, this is what I was concerned is, Selectmen Binka, can you give us the dates again for the amateur golf tournament?
I got them here, the 9th through the 18th.
9th through the 18th, next week, I think, right?
The practice rounds actually start on the 10th, so, but...
I think it would, I think we, you know, it would be very inappropriate for us to rip those streets up, just as they're having hundreds of people try to come to watch this amateur golf.
Thousands.
Thousands of people, okay. They said it's not quite as big a deal as the Ryder Cup, but yes, I'm sure it still will get quite a crowd, so we don't want to make it impossible.
Yeah, we're not going to be there until after everything's done.
Okay. Any other questions while we have Mr. Ditto?
Yeah, that actually was M. Just backing up to L.
Yep.
The item is mill and overlay various streets. Peter, what streets and when?
Absolutely.
Should people expect it?
We will be doing Lancaster Terrace from Beacon Street to Summit Ave. That's about 2,500 square feet, 2,100 square feet. We'll be doing Babcock Street from Harvard to Devotion Street. It's approximately 880 feet. We'll be doing Chestnut Street from High Street to the Rotary at the Boston Line, and that includes going around the Rotary, and that's about 800 feet. We'll also do a section of Pond Ave from Jamaica Road to the Rotary. And we'll be doing Aspenwall Ave from Harvard Street to St. Paul Street, which is about 600 feet. And we'll be doing Kent Street from Linden Street to Aspenwall Ave, which is approximately 650 feet.
Is the Babcock one, does that go right in front of the fire station there?
Yes, goes up, and just past it. It goes up to the concrete pavement.
So you have worked something out with them as to, I mean, are they going to have to relocate trucks and things like that? To respond to...
Yeah, when I get the schedule, I'll sit down with the, well, actually, I'll have the fire chief sit down with me and the contractor and make sure the schedule's good for everybody.
Okay.
Do, do you have a schedule now?
Not yet.
Okay. I know that one thing we've done is we've, at times, milled all of the streets at one time and then come back and done the overlay all at one time, rather than getting it over with one street at a time. Is that the practice that's going to be followed here?
Yeah, this is where this is so many small areas, in order for him to make it worthwhile, he has to have the milling machine in here once and knock the alleys out. Now, the good thing about this is contractor, he doesn't do the milling, he subcontract that out, but he does do the paving. He's a paving contractor, so he has the control of the paving operation, which is, which is nice. You don't have to chase him too far to get him in here.
And do you have any idea of when this is going to be starting on the streets that you named?
I really don't, until I can get him in here and find out what he has on the books now and when he can get in.
Okay, I just want...
I'll say this, it should be before the winter, it should be sometime this fall at the latest.
Okay, yes, Selectman Wyszynski?
The Kent Street stretch sounds particularly sensitive to me, because it's kind of a through route, plus it is a route to, you know, going kind of towards Lawrence School. So that one shouldn't be left in a milled state for too long, I would hope.
All right, I have a sort of general question. I noticed that the, we have two projects being done under contract with Mario Susi and Sons. Do they have the capability of managing two simultaneously?
Oh, they absolutely do. I'm tickled pink they're in town.
Okay, good, just wanted to be sure. All right, we ready to move ahead with our votes? Oh, sorry, one more. Ms. Gallantyne, could you just help explain what happened with the school grounds and maintenance? Why it had to be rebid?
Good evening. Very good memory. We rebid the school grounds maintenance contract because there was just, there were some questions from the bidders in terms of whether we were awarding the contract based on what we had were base bid and add alternates. And so we clarified that in the rebid, and the low bid from the first bid is the successful bidder in our rebid.
Okay, good, good.
And we're very happy with them. This will be the first year of what is a three-year contract.
Okay, well, that's... Okay, well, that's good news. I just was concerned that there'd been some more troubling reason that you had to rebid it. Good, okay.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to begin with the first, all right, we've done the motion pictures. All right, let's vote separately on designating a Selectman to be Chair of the Municipal Service Center Committee of Seven, and the roof replacement, Selectman Goldstein to Chair Municipal Service Center Committee of Seven, and Selectman Wyszynski has agreed to chair the roof replacement program. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And I would like to then go forward with items D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. And I'm going to read very quickly through these, but we'll vote them in a lot. D, I move that we approve change order number one in the amount of $2,177.46 for work to be performed in connection with the Pierce School Auditorium renovations. I move that we approve and execute Chapter 90 reimbursement requests. Harvard Street improvements, $37,335. Beverly Road construction project, $5,469.53. Clark Road reconstruction, $730. I move that we award and execute contract number PW 13-18 Walnut Street improvements in the amount of $413,140.75 with Mario Susi and Sons. I move that we approve extra work order number one in the amount of $6,303.44 for additional asphalt in contract number PW 13-26. I move that we award and execute contract number PW 14-1 school ground maintenance in the amount of $101,277.50 to Park Landscape Associates. I move that we award and execute contract number PW 14-08 Dean Road Reconstruction in the amount of $434,420 with AR Belai, Inc. I move that we award contract number PW 14-09 Microsoft Various Streets in the amount of-
Microsurface.
Microsurface, sorry. That was a slip. Microsurface Various Streets in the amount of $169,467.64 to Seal Coating, Inc. of Braintree. I move that we award and execute contract number 14-11 Walnut Hills Cemetery Roadway Reconstruction in the amount of $143,827 with D and R General Contracting. I move that we award and execute contract number PW 14-12 Mill and Overlay Various Streets in the amount of $455,128.25 to D and R General Contracting. I move that we award and execute contract number PW 14-13 Mill and Overlay Clyde and Lee Streets Northbound in the amount of $392,098 with Mario Susi and Sons. And I move that we approve amendment number 10 in the amount of $500,000 for work to be performed by Beta Group in connection with contract number PW 7-3 MWRA Sewer Separation Project. All in favor?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I hold the vote for one second?
Yep.
G wasn't in my package, and I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it while Mr. Ditto was up there.
Okay.
It's the single tree driveway.
It was an addition, I think. Yep.
And Selectman Banka says he doesn't have it either. I wonder, Peter, if you haven't left, do you mind just quickly addressing the single tree?
Actually, that should have been Selectman Daly's question.
I know, I know.
Additional asphalt for the single tree hill driveway? Yes.
$6,000?
Yes.
Why was that necessary?
When we got up there, we saw that there was, there was a need for an additional paved surface to store some of the water division's equipment. And in addition to that, when we saw the, where the drainage was going, when it was leaving the site, it was exiting the site onto the long year, I guess it's a long year property. And so we had to build a section of the roadway there to swale it away from the, going into their property. So between expanding the existing surface and correcting a drainage problem, it added up to about 37 tons overage.
$6,000?
Yep.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but since we didn't have the paper there.
Okay, are you, yeah, are you satisfied now to?
I am satisfied.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Ditto.
Yep.
All right, then I'm going to move all of those previously read-out items. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, I move we grant a temporary wine and malt license to the Brookline Teen Center in connection with a fundraiser to be held tomorrow night from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at 40 Aspen Wall Avenue. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, moving to the main calendar, and we have a request from the Fire Department. Chief Ford, and while you are at the microphone, would you like to tell us about the fire that occurred at 71 Spooner Road?
Sure, good evening.
And then we'll talk to you about your, only, only if you tell us will we talk to you about your personnel matter.
So I have no choice.
You could say that.
Well, as you are aware, on July 26th of this year, at 8:55 p.m., the Police Department received a call of a suspicious person in the Middlesex Road area. The callers, several calls stating individual, no shirt on, seemed to be in pain, crying, with some sort of injuries to his upper body. They responded along with some other communities. I believe Boston came in and one of the college police departments looking for this individual. They didn't find anyone at that time. They did notice a smell of smoke in the area and went around a couple of streets and they found the structure fire at 71 Spooner. Fire suppression crews arrived on the scene shortly after to a fully involved two-story wood frame structure, residential structure. Deputy Chief Sullivan responded that evening in C2, and he became the incident commander of the scene. Due to the heavy volume of fire that was present in the close proximity of 81 Spooner, which is on, we call the Bravo side or the left side of the building, looking at it from the street, the fire quickly went through a second into a third alarm fire. That third alarm brings in all the Brookline companies. We actually had four Boston companies there, a Cambridge company, and a Newton company. And that doesn't take into consideration the other communities that, or other companies from other communities that were protecting the town at that time. I was notified shortly after the fire and responded from home. Chief Sullivan did an excellent job, as did all the men there. After ensuring that there were no possible rescues needed in the fire building itself, they concentrated on the exposure. And 81 Spooner did receive some damage. The 71 is very close to it and had some exterior damage, some melting, and also possibility of some fire getting into it. So my men had to make entry into the house, force entry, and do some work looking for fire. I personally saw what went on in there, and I spoke to the owners who related to me. They were extremely happy with the efforts taken and the way their home was saved and protected. So that's always nice to hear. Shortly after the arrival at the fire, the roof collapsed of 71 Spooner. So it was, in some ways, it was very fortunate that it was fully involved and we got there and stopped any kind of entry. The job of containment and extinguishment of the fire went on through the night and into Saturday. But the fire investigation started shortly after the fire began. Brookline Fire Department, arson investigator showed up, Brookline PD investigator showed up, they worked together hand in hand. And the State Fire Marshal's Office was called also. Their investigator showed up and brought one of their dogs, their arson dogs. A determination was made that the fire was indeed an arson deliberately set fire. That investigation is still ongoing and open, and they continue to progress in it. From the, from the police side of it, after they took that initial call for the suspicious person, they put out a notice to the surrounding communities to be on the lookout for someone with these type of injuries, should they find them. Shortly after, Boston PD notified them that they were responding to a burn victim on Perkins Street, which I understand is not far from Brookline Line. There, they found an individual with burns and took his story. He became a suspect at that time. He was transported to the hospital. The investigation continued throughout the next couple of days. Brookline Police Department, the police officers investigating it, they ultimately applied for an arrest warrant. The gentleman was in the hospital at the time. That warrant ended up being served by Norfolk County Sheriff, and the individual was arrested, charged with three different counts dealing with arson of an occupied structure and unoccupied structure, and also a structure that was insured. The efforts of the suppression crews on the, on scene were commendable, in my opinion. The job of protecting and saving 81 Spooner was foremost in their mind and very successful at that. And I'm happy to report, at least at this time, we have no confirmed injuries. The investigation is still progressing, as I said, and between the Brookline Fire Department, the Police Department, State Fire Marshal's Office. But the Brookline Police Department has really taken the lead now at this point, a criminal investigation, and they're doing an excellent job. And again, it is progressing and still open at this time.
Well, I am very pleased to hear that we suffered no injuries and that I gather the, the building that burned down was vacant. But what about the neighboring building, 81? Were there any occupants in that building at the time?
They were out for the evening or the weekend. They did end up being called by neighbors, and they returned during the fire. And so was I, it was-
It was vacant, yeah, right.
It was unoccupied at the time, but it is an occupied structure.
Right, exactly.
It's a family with a couple of children that lives in 81 Spooner. And I guess fortunately, they weren't there at the beginning of this, but fortunately also their home was saved, so.
Right, well, we are enormously grateful to the speedy response and to the multi-community response to back up our firefighters who were, who were on duty at the time. I certainly am very also grateful that the individual was tracked down and identified, and would be really, really nice to have a successful prosecution conclusion, so, well done.
I think there'll be a good outcome on this.
Yeah, thank you very much. So any other comments from members of the board?
No.
Nope, all right, then we have, you have now earned your personnel item.
Okay. Well, I am before you today to let you know that we did have a lieutenant, Fire Lieutenant Ronald Pronin, after many years with the Brookline Fire Department. He retired recently. And that opens up, creates a vacancy for a fire lieutenant in one of the suppression companies. So I would like to move forward, and we have a civil service list, we have an interview process, but I'd like to move forward and then come back to you with a name for that promotion.
Okay, are there any questions for Chief Ford about this? No?
No questions.
Then therefore, I move that we approve filling a vacancy in, whoops, let me get the right, position of lieutenant in the Fire Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Go find your replacement, sir.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to meeting the new lieutenant.
Have a good day.
Ms. Dobek, I have to tell you that when I first saw this item on the calendar, we corrected a typographic error because I think we originally thought we were looking for a van diver, but it turns out that's not what you had in mind. So would you like to tell us about your request for a hire?
Sure. Ruth Ann Dobek, Director of the Brookline Council on Aging, good evening. This is a van driver position that is paid for by the nonprofit arm of the Brookline Senior Center. So for everybody who gets our announcements on, around the save the date for our Autumn Benefit, a reminder that one of the number one fundraising goals of the Autumn Benefit is for the driver position. And the person who had been the van driver, Ron Gallagher, was the only driver since we started back in November of 2003. The Senior Center first started with a very limited part-time van driver. And through our fundraising efforts, we were able to increase the hours to almost 35. This position, just for background history, provided in the last 10 years, over 600 seniors, 31,000 rides back and forth to the Senior Center. So you can see how important it is to our transportation program. Ron retired this June from his position. And we at first thought we would do two part-time positions to possibly give us more options if we found the right combination. After advertising and interviewing, the right candidate is a one person. So we are now coming for approval on a full-time position of the van driver. I just want to reiterate that this is funded by the nonprofit, and they are committed to providing the town with reimbursement for including, you know, health benefits if the individual signs up for the town's health insurance.
Okay, questions for Ms. Dobek about this? I have to say, I suspect that you are wise in having a full-time driver because this is a population that's vulnerable, and I'm sure there are many repeat riders, and having the constant consistency of a single driver picking people up and knowing who they are is probably an additional safety factor. So I'm actually quite pleased that you made your determination. Therefore, I move that we approve filling a vacancy in the position of van driver for the Council on Aging. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Dobek. Good luck. Okay, we are now moving to a noise bylaw waiver. And I believe this is a request from Tasco Construction. Is there a representative present from the construction company, or is this Mr. Ditto speaking?
We have two people here tonight going to shepherd this, us through this process. One's from the contractor, Tasco, and the other is the consultant. So I'll turn it over to them and they can explain.
Before they start, can I just ask, I want to renew my concern about this work happening right during this amateur golf tournament?
Okay.
And I'll direct this question to you, Mr. Ditto. Is it appropriate to have a lot of construction work going on right nearby at the country club during the week that they're having their big golf tournament?
Well, let's turn it over and find out what's involved with this and what, how, what's going to be left in the morning, how long it's going to take, and then maybe we can decide after that whether it's appropriate.
Okay.
My name is Brian Pendleton. I'm with VAI Engineering Firm. The engineering firm working on the project, acting as a resident engineer, representing the city out there overseeing construction. So we had submitted Tasco, Peter Remolo from Tasco is here as well. He had submitted a letter to the board because we have a few items we need to do at night, given the amount of traffic that travels through Horace James Circle. I think the most recent letter is the July 23rd. I think we had submitted an initial letter, but we didn't get the board, the hearing until after the first dates we were looking to do work, so that didn't- to do work. So that didn't, so we sent in a revised letter, requesting, basically, if you look at that letter, there's item one, bullet one and bullet two. Bullet one was for work we were going to do at Heath, the Heath Street intersection, and bullet two was for work we were going to do at the Horace James Circle. For now, we're going to take bullet one off the table. We don't, we're not have our schedule set for Heath Street yet. So I imagine we'll be back in front of the board in another month or so to request to do that work. So for tonight, I just want to present the Horace James Circle and what it is we're looking to do there. I don't know if you've been out there recently, but we have done some new sidewalk work, some wheelchair ramps, and a little bit of curbing reset out there. What remains is to mill the pavement and then put down a new coat of pavement, new striping, new signage. And then that will be it for the Horace James Circle intersection. The operations of milling and paving are fairly, I won't say labor-intensive, but they're very traffic disruptive if you're trying to do it during the day. I don't know how familiar you are with milling, but it's just taking the top two inches off of the pavement with a machine that grinds it, shoots it into a truck, the truck drives away and dumps it over wherever they're taking it to. So that operation, you can drive immediately, you can drive back on top of that. So, come the morning, there'll be no problems with that. Then there's about a week where we'd set castings, any of the manholes that are out there, we'd do all that work during the day, as we've done all the work to date during the day. Then about a week later, we'd come in, pave the intersection. And given the amount of traffic that's out there, paving that during the day, you just, you wouldn't get a very good product. So that's why we're requesting, we put down the week of April 12th, I mean, sorry, August 12th, two nights to do the milling. We may be able to get it done in one night. It seems like a lot, so I'd really prefer to request two nights. Right now, because that one's so close, we're planning on August 13th, which is a Tuesday night, and August 14th, which would be the Wednesday night. If it works, I know you just expressed some concern about a golf tournament that I know nothing about, but...
The country club, which is quite nearby, is having the amateur golf tournament, US amateur golf tournament. It's a big deal.
Sure, yeah, sure.
I'm not a golfer, but I'm told this is a big deal.
Yeah.
And that they're going to have a lot of traffic coming right into that area.
Particularly don't want to do anything during the day there, so we can't wait for...
Right. But I'm even concerned about, I mean, in my experience, when milling is going on, it's very hard to drive on those streets, even during the day. I mean, it's, you're picking the exact week that the golf tournament is going on.
So what is the week that the amateur tournament is?
What are our dates again for the tournament?
10th through the 18th.
Can you push this back a week?
I would think we could push it back a week. I don't know. So if we need to do that, if that's what you'd like us to do, we can...
Well, I think, I think we certainly would prefer that.
Okay, so if we tried for the week of August 19th, if we tried Monday night, the 19th, and Tuesday night, the 20th, to do the milling, then the following week, and again, I don't know how exact I need to be with the dates right now, because if there's any rain dates or things like that, we basically, there's four nights. We want to reserve two for milling and two for paving.
Okay.
If you've driven that area, I would suggest on the project at Newton, the Hammond Pond Parkway, where paving got delayed for three weeks due to rain every night.
Right.
Being in the forecast, so.
So, you need a space of days between the milling work and then the paving work? Is that what I understand?
Approximately a week, yes.
Well, I think they want two weeks. Right, but if you do Monday, Tuesday, then you would do, like, schedule the following Monday, Tuesday. So if you can do the 19th and 20th, then it would be the 26th and 27th. Is that right?
That sounds very reasonable, yes.
Well, I'm just reading the numbers off the calendar.
Yeah, I know, those are the dates. Those are the dates. I just don't, I don't have my paver lined up.
Okay, actually. Well, I think he's asked, though, in the current thing, for the whole week, for each of them, so that they have some flexibility if it's rainy one night or something.
Yeah, I mean, if that's something we could do.
Which, I'm happy to do that, as long as you're not there the week that this golf tournament is on.
Yeah, no, and I'm happy to, we could, yeah, just ask for those, you know, the week of the 19th for the milling operation, and the week of the 26th for the paving operation.
Because the country club came to us, I think, like, three years ago to tell us about this event. So for us to rip the road up the week they have it, I think would look kind of inhospitable.
Duly noted. We can, we can work with that.
All right. Any other, yes, Selectman Benka?
Our packet includes a July 26th letter to Brookline residents informing them of the hearing today. And I'm just wondering, to whom that letter was sent, how it was delivered, how it was, to whom, who, to who, which residents received it?
I believe we received it in a butters list through the, through the town, I think.
I am a butters, a butters, a butters.
Okay. For both, for both Heath, the Heath Street intersection and the circle?
Just the circle.
Just the circle?
Just the circle. So I'm taking item one off. We're not asking for anything to do near Heath Street.
This is just going to be...
So the circle is their, a number of single-family homes?
I believe so. I mean, that's what it appears to be to me.
And they all received notice?
Yeah, we have a lot of the characters that have signed, they've already received. We sent emergency.
Did you have any responses to that?
I did not receive any directly. Did you receive any?
Can you tell us a little bit about, can you tell us a little bit about the noise that they can expect? I mean, this is going on through the, through the entire entirety of the night, right?
Yes. I mean, there'll be a dull roar, if you've ever heard a grinding machine, you know, and...
Not so dull, but yeah.
Yeah, well, depends how close to it you are. But I mean, it's not a constant beep-beep. You shouldn't be hearing too much backup noise. There's, you know, there's probably going to be, I'm guessing, eight to 10 trucks on the cycle, where a truck will back, back up to the machine, machine loads the truck, the truck drives away. Next truck gets loaded and does the same thing, you know, repeat. And so there's no, I'd say there's no digging operation, there's no excavator. So there's minimal backup alarms. That seems to be, at times, one of the noisiest things.
May I assume we have some pretty bright work lights?
There'll be, I had requested two light towers.
Does that mean generators going with those, with those light towers?
Yeah, they operate off a generator, yes. But I think the paving machine may be slightly louder than that. And I would say, I mean, a lot of this, the, I believe the residents are, you know, they're off the edge of the circle. We can put the light towers in the middle of the circle facing out, so they're on the other side of the road. And just cut it down. Obviously, don't set up a light tower in someone's front yard, you know, it was a little bit of common sense.
Okay. We should see if there's anybody here, but it's a necessary evil. It's a very busy section of road, and I wouldn't want to tie it up during the day any more than I'd want to tie it up at night, so.
All right. Other questions? Well, wait a minute. Other questions from the board before we take public comment? All right. Anyone who is wish, here who wishes to speak on this subject? Ms. Khan, please come forward.
Thank you very much, Janice Khan, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15. So, one thing that the board should know, that they may have given notice to a butters to a butters, but they did not give notice to, as far as I can tell, to Town Meeting Members in Precinct 15, or 16, or, well, especially those precincts. And I do believe that Town Meeting Members should be apprised of that. And I would like that made known in the future to please include us when they're having disruptive events in our precincts. So, I did have a question about the number of hours that the machinery will actually be working. I realize that there is, it says 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, but I wonder if it's that entire, that entire time that this will be happening. And you asked, you asked about the noise level. So I'm just wondering, in terms of decibel levels, how much above our noise bylaw we can expect since noise grows exponentially? And just so also, I can talk to the neighbors and let them know more clearly exactly what to expect. Thank you.
Will our applicant respond to that, please?
As far as decibels, I'd be guessing it's in the 100 to 120 range. I'm not, it's not my area of expertise, but, you know, my understanding, you get up 140 or something, it gets a little painful. I'm not looking to, you know. All I can speak to is, you hear a truck back up and they grind their gear, not grind their gears, but they take off with a heavy load, you hear the exhaust, that's probably about the max you're going to...
It's the beeping that's maddening in the middle of the night.
Yeah, well, I don't think this has a constant beeping element to it, and it shouldn't.
But every time they go in reverse, they're going to beep.
Yeah, and they don't always have to be in reverse. And when they do go in reverse, it's, you know, once every 15 minutes, and it lasts 20...
Okay, every 15 minutes. Beep, 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 beep. Would you like me to stop? Yes, I think we all would like you to stop.
I know. We've certainly had problems with the milling process on Route 9 at night, so it's not a trivial request. One...
But, and I think what they were asking, too, was, do you expect that noise to go on during that entire time period, 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM?
My expectation would be that if we're allowed to work at 8, things don't really, you know, you start setting up, you get your tone set up. But ideally, we'd be going by 8:30, when it's a little bit earlier, rather than, if it looks like it's something we could finish up in one evening, I would think we would work till 6:00 and get it done, so we wouldn't be back the next night to do the same thing. If it's something that, look, we're only going to get just over halfway through this tonight, then maybe we're looking to wrap it up. You know, I wouldn't think that they'd wrap it up at 2:00, but it could be 4:00, where they start to pull things down and get out of there, if we're going to go back the second night. Again, I believe this potentially could be done in one night, but two, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if it goes two. There's a lot of, what slows down a milling operation, if you see sewer manholes, castings, any kind of steel in the road, you have to pick the machine up, go forward, bring it back down again. Then they need the small machine to go around all those little steel objects. So that slows it down.
Well, let me suggest, I mean, you wouldn't be violating the noise bylaw if you started some of the setup before 8:00, so you could get going right then and do as much of the noisy thing early in the evening, rather than keeping people awake at all night long.
Yeah, I would imagine we wouldn't have any problem starting at 7:00, you know, even 6:30. You get too much earlier, you're into traffic.
Yeah, 6:30, you're going to hit the rush hour.
Yeah, we don't want to be in the traffic either.
I would say 7:00 is probably when you'd want to start.
One of the issues with Route 9 was the fact that it's a linear process, and the milling process basically moved down the road. With Horace James Circle, where you're really just dealing with the circle, as I take it, what about noise barriers? There are really homes, there's, I'm thinking of the circle, there's a home on one quadrant of it and some other homes on another...
We have LaGrange and Newton Street, everybody, with the homes are over in that corner.
Yeah. What about noise barriers?
I've never used a portable noise barrier, and I don't know how we'd set something up like that. I mean, we could try, if it's desirable, we could try and start those earlier, if we can get out of there. Start at that location at, like you said, 7:00, over Newton Street and LaGrange Street, start at that, come out Hammond Pond, stay to the right, stay over there, try and get, concentrate on those earlier.
To get, to get the area closest to the homes done more quickly, and then the other quadrant really is...
Is it further away from any homes that I observed?
Exactly, and also, yeah, the fire station and the, and the Hemlock Woods there.
Yeah, I don't see that being an issue. We have to start somewhere. So, if that was desirable, we can certainly do that to try and help.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this?
Do you want to make that an explicit condition, that the area closest to the homes will be done as early in the evening as possible, rather than being done at two?
We'll just start at that location.
At 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, yeah.
Question. When do you make the go/no-go decision on a particular night? Is it a day or two in advance, or?
It would likely be a day. The paving sometimes gets a little, you know, the milling is pretty simple, because a light rain, you can mill in light rain, it keeps dust down, it's actually pretty good.
But the milling is the real noisy operation.
Yeah, there's only one time I've been walking beside a paver that I thought, this is the noisiest paver I've ever heard in my life. So, it wasn't working with these guys.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could leaflet the, right around the circle, when we know what the date is, so the people know, and if they may want to...
Exactly. Well, I mean, right now, I think I'm pretty confident scheduling the milling portion. I'm more, less confident scheduling, I mean, I'm confident to schedule it, and we'll work to get the 26th and 27th on the paving. If we let the miller know now, the 19th, 20th, if he keeps those clears, it's not as weather-dependent. Be pretty confident we can hold it if we get it set.
It seems to me, as soon as we know what the date is, is there a way that we can leaflet, or someone can leaflet the butters so that they know that? And it, leaflet the town?
Yeah, we can send out an email to the town.
Send an email to the town. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, and an email to the town meeting.
So, does the contractor take responsibility for that, Peter? Does the town take responsibility for that?
I'm not sure what's the reaction.
Notice.
Notice to, notice to the butters.
Give me the day we're going to do it, or the week we're going to do it?
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're not going to expect it to go on overnight, you know? People have missed notices of this hearing. That's going to be a surprise to them. I've seen the work that you guys have been preparing, too, and nothing would lead me to believe that you're going to do it, you know, 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM coming up. So that, that will be a surprise to people. And the best, best defense against angry neighbors is to, is to let them know.
Yeah, we've, we've had...
As soon as we secure the date, and we just confirm, because I think we were lining up the 12th, as soon as we can secure the 19th, 20th, we'll get the notices out.
Okay. And Mr. Ditto, can you send out the email to Town Meeting Members to let them know?
Okay, just to put this in context, we had a situation where there was a family with a young child, and there was milling work going on in the middle of the night. And the kid wasn't able to sleep, and, you know, there were health issues and concerns about that. So, you know, it's not just a matter of, well, the equipment is there, so the people should know that something's going to go on, but it's giving them some advanced notice, so that if they want to make other arrangements for that evening, they'll have enough notice to do that.
Do you have anything unusual?
Thank you.
Just to put it in another context, last time we allowed one of these on Brookline Ave, I got a call at 4:00 in the morning at my own, my own, saying that if she couldn't, this woman couldn't sleep, then her selectman shouldn't be sleeping.
What is your number?
All right. I think we've made it clear that our biggest concern is that people be notified when the actual work will be done, so they can make alternate plans, put earplugs in, whatever it takes to get through it. And also, it is very important for them, at the time you prepare this flyer, if you know that it will be two nights only because you've got it scheduled and the weather looks good, say that. I think that would be also very reassuring, and they'll get through it, and you can go on and come back the following week or whatever.
Yeah.
But I think that the important thing is not to have it be unanticipated, or people not to have the opportunity to be prepared. Okay? And we appreciate your cooperation about the golf tournament dates. Thank you. Right. All right. Any other questions or comments? Selectman Benka, do you want to add conditions to this?
Yes.
I've changed the dates, but I'm...
Right. So the, the dates would be two nights, and as I understand it, the milling would be August 19th and August 20th?
They're looking for, they want the week. Two weeks, so it's four...
A two-week period, but a total of no more than four nights.
That's what we're asking for.
Right.
Two nights for milling and two nights for paving.
Right.
To occur in those...
Exactly. And the work will begin as early in the evening as possible in the areas that are closest to the homes in that area.
Yeah. Just one question, and not that this is, I anticipate this happening, but if we got out there at 7:00 with the milling operation, started up the milling machine, it broke, and we pull it off the side of the road, you know, it still may take me two nights. Do I come back in front of you? How do I address something like that if it was to happen?
Unfortunately, you got to come back. I mean, we're giving you permission for two nights, and you've got those two nights. If it goes to three nights...
Well, but it's two nights during that two-week period. If you don't use one night because your machine broke...
Well, but it's two nights during that two-week period. If you don't use one night because your machine broke, then I guess you use the next two nights or something like that, I mean.
I'm just trying to throw out a scenario.
Or you do some work during allowable hours that don't require a noise variance.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe on a Saturday or Sunday when there's less traffic, Sunday probably.
All right.
Well, they're gonna be paying time and half anyway.
And notice will be provided to the abutters. They will be leafletted of the nights that these operations will occur, and Mr. Diddo will email town meeting members in precincts fifteen and sixteen.
So Kate, have you followed this? Good, then I'm not going to try to read it to you. But I will move that we approve the request of Tascow Construction Company, developer of the Chestnut Hill Square project, for a noise bylaw waiver from eight PM to six AM for four nights during the weeks beginning August nineteenth and August twenty-sixth, with the expectation and condition that notice will be given by flyer to the abutters, and that the town will provide email notices to town meeting members in precincts fifteen and sixteen. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
May the sun shine during the night. Okay, and our next set of items are interviews with candidates for our override study committee, and I think we're gonna take them up in alphabetical order. So, if Mr. Clark Bruno-
May I just?
Sure.
Give Mr. Bruno a little bit of advanced notice, and the other candidates. I'm Dick Binka, I'm one of the co-chairs of the override study committee. Susan Wolf Ditko, who is the other co-chair of the committee-
Wave your hand.
Is here. Susan is a member of the school committee. I just wanna start by saying to everybody who's here that I will be asking a question, and you can think about it, and that is that if you were a member of the committee, what particular issue or issues might you wanna carve out that would fit your particular interests and expertise, and that would be relevant to the charge of the committee? And that question is asked with the recognition that we may well break up into subcommittees, or task forces, or individuals focusing on particular issues. And so, you can all think a little bit about that, Mr. Bruno, because he has the advantage or the disadvantage of his name beginning with B, which I know well, we'll have to answer that first, but I just wanted to let you all know that I will be asking that. And I just wanna express my gratitude, and that of Susan, and that of the entire community for the willingness of so many well-qualified individuals to apply to this committee. It really is an embarrassment at riches, and it's gonna make the selection of the committee very difficult.
Or you could have thirty members.
Or we could have thirty members, but there really have been an extraordinary number of very, very well-qualified individuals applying to this committee. So I do wanna thank you, and thank you on behalf of the entire community for that.
And maybe you should tell them how often you expect to meet and that sort of thing.
Right. We will, well, we, I hope that the board, or I expect that the board will vote the membership of the committee next week. I think that August tends to be a difficult time for many individuals, so we may have just an introductory meeting in August, and then I think the committee will get going in earnest in September. And the expectation is that the full committee will be meeting at least every two weeks, and that there will be individual projects carved out for committee members to work on between those meetings. So, the, it will be a working committee, with committee meetings, again, at least every two weeks, if not more frequently, work between those meetings. And the initial recommendation of the committee with respect to the fiscal year fifteen budget is due on March first. There are longer-term issues that may well go on after that, but any recommendations for a potential override or debt exclusion for fiscal year fifteen, the selectmen's charge has asked that be completed by March first of next year. So, the September to March period will be intense, and then there will be work after that, potentially.
Okay, with that little background introduction, Mr. Bruno. Welcome. And our introductory question is always, tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you're interested in taking on this rather intense-sounding task.
A little bit about myself, I recently moved to Brookline. I am a resident of our happy town as of thirteen months. I moved here, and I'm part of the problem that we're now-
Yes, yes, we're getting it.
We have two children, Pierce, and one of the reasons, and I think the principal reason we came here, was because of the schools. I am a recovering lawyer. I've been practicing about twenty years. The greatest joys that I had professionally were working in government. I spent four years working for Mayor Bloomberg during his first term. I was privileged to be part of the team that turned around a large dysfunctional city agency. I then moved across to Hudson and worked for Governor Corzine for his four years. His brand has slipped a little since then. I spent four years working with him on energy and environmental matters in his council's office. I got a job up in Wakefield, and I have been in the private sector since. I work building large projects on the bulk power grid. I supervise projects between two-hundred-and-fifty million and about one billion dollars. They take four to five years to develop. I have a character flaw. I think there's no higher calling in a democracy than to work for the government, and to work with government. I've spent a good part of my career working for government in a paid capacity. I am very interested in contributing to my new hometown to solve this fairly challenging problem that we all face.
Okay. Questions from members of the committee? Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. So I'll ask a question, it's gonna sound like I'm asking for some negative news about you, but it might be something positive. Do you come to the process with any biases? Do you have any ideas about how you think this project-
Have you signed any petitions lately?
Well, for instance, you mentioned you're a Pierce school parent. I know that there are some Pierce school parents who think that the solution might lie in taking a bulldozer to Pierce School and rebuilding it. Not, and again, it's not necessarily a negative, because we wanna balance this committee, but do you come with any early, you know, ideas about where you'd like to see it end up?
Honestly, no. I think I've been around the difficult issues enough in my career to understand that there are a variety of perspectives on those issues. I would understand my mission to listen to all those perspectives. I should be clear that I think my wife has a very defined perspective on this issue, and I would listen to her as well, but I think that I, I hope, in fifteen years of marriage, I've been able to maintain an independent mind about certain things. And so, straightforwardly, no. I have assigned no petitions, I have written no letters. I have a great deal of respect for what the B-Space Committee has done. I think they're, they were handed a very difficult mission, and lots and lots of people have contributed an enormous amount, members of the committee, and people paying attention to the committee. And I think it's inevitable that people find issues to focus on and object to that immediately affect them. That's part of the political process. I think there's also something called the public interest. I believe in that. And I think that there is room to find the public interest in what the B-Space Committee has done, and in the charge to this committee itself.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense to me.
Other questions from members?
Sure. You heard my question. If you were to carve out an issue or issues that would fit your interests and your expertise, what would that be?
I think two come to mind. First is, during my time in government, and now in the private sector, I've spent a good amount of time thinking about the mandate to project, and then guesstimate what happens in the future. The limitations of those exercises, no matter how sophisticated they may be, and decision-making that's required to cope with various scenarios. And so I think that my role in looking at projections, from financial projections to demographic projections, would be one area that I'd like to contribute. Second area, particularly during my time with Governor Corzine, and now, building large-scale infrastructure projects. I think I have a decent background in finance, and I would relish the opportunity to examine some of the town's spending and revenue assumptions going on into the future, and seeing whether a fresh eye and some questions could help those be sharpened.
Thank you.
I have a sort of a fact question for you, and that is, as a new resident, have you actually come to grips with what Proposition Two and a Half is, and why we keep talking about an override study committee?
Come to grips would be too strong a statement. I think it's a fairly charged issue in Massachusetts and elsewhere. But I think that Proposition Two and a Half is something that I am comfortable talking about, yes. Legislature's-
It's different from New Jersey, I think is what I'm trying to say. Somewhat. Selectman Daly?
Yeah, my question has to do, so I think you said you've been here thirteen months?
Thirteen months.
So you've been through one school year?
Yes.
So you're sort of getting familiar with the issues and so forth. What grades are your kids in?
I have a daughter who is going into third grade, and a son who is going into seventh.
Selectman Washinsky?
So, I've been asking the kind of the process questions. Do you feel comfortable getting into the center of this issue in a very high-profile kind of way in the Facebook world, where your every utterance perhaps may find its way into Facebook, and Twitter, and YouTube, and all that other stuff?
Yes, I have lived in that world before. I am comfortable with it. I know its triumphs and its tribulations. Yes, sir.
It's a new world for me.
We're learning.
And then my other process question is, how's your schedule look? Will you have the time to put in? How's the intersection of your professional life gonna work with this?
I asked myself that question. That is, I think, a very significant question, given the charge of the committee. It would be difficult for me candidly, if you said I have to begin work this evening. I am at a particularly acute time in my career between now and September twelfth, which just happens to be my son's birthday. And I think after September twelfth, there will be a change, and we will either be hiring additional staff, or there is other things in the works, so that I think I can juggle my professional responsibilities and my civic responsibilities, where I'd be lucky enough to be appointed.
September twelfth is the exact date after which work will be starting.
You plotted this, huh? Okay, any final follow-ups from members of the board? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bruno, and I have to second Selectman Binka's comment. We are quite impressed with the quality of those folks who have come here to take advantage of our great educational system, and appreciate how many are willing to come forward and offer to volunteer their time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll be making appointments next week, assuming everything goes well, and you'll hear from us next in writing.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your great educational system.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chang. Welcome. And I would just observe that I noticed that you are fluent in Spanish and Cantonese. That's an interesting combination.
I was born in Panama. My parents are ethnically Chinese, so that's why I have a Spanish first name. Lived my first ten years in Panama, where I learned Spanish, and then when we moved and immigrated to the US, I learned English.
Well, it's just an unusual combination, Spanish and Chi, I mean, I've heard of a lot of other combinations, but that one has really got my attention. Anyway, welcome, and please tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you'd like to be part of this process.
In September, I will have been the resident in Brookline for five years, and I've enjoyed my time here. My partner and I moved here from Seattle. I, we're thinking about having more kids. We currently have two from his previous marriage, and they're actually in private school, even though we live in Brookline.
Oh.
Because they have special needs that we need to focus on. The reason why I'm interested in this is I've always wanted to contribute to the community, and I thought this would be a great way. I've spent my entire career on more business ventures, business clients. The only government entities I've worked with is SEC, DOJ, FBI, and IRS, but I haven't really worked with towns or governments per se. So I thought this would be a great opportunity to answer Selectman Binka's question. I'm probably most suitable for financial modeling, since I've been doing that all my professional career. I've also taught Excel to our staff people when I worked at Price, Wadows, Coopers. I am a CPA, so I do a lot of forecasting, and I look at numbers a lot, and data analysis. So I just thought that that's how I could contribute to this committee.
Okay, well, Selectman Goldstein?
Thanks, well, I'll ask my question about biases. Do you come to this process with any early assumptions or early ideas about where you think it should end up?
No, even though I live across from Pierce, I'm not aware of this apparently tumultuous-type issue. So, but anyway, no, I don't have any biases. I live in the townhouse, and there are neighbors that have kids at Pierce, and they rave about it, so that's, oh, I know. Thank you.
Selectman Binka?
Well, I think, unless you wanna expand, I think my, you've addressed my question of the particular areas that you would believe would fit your expertise and your interests.
I will ask my question then. So, since you don't, since your kids are not in the Brookline schools, do you have much familiarity with our schools?
Yes. We did consider, the youngest, the younger one actually attended two of the middle schools, because he came in during middle school, so they're private schools at high school level. So we don't have the privilege of going to Brookline High, but we did experience Lawrence and Trisco for the younger kid. And I love how Trisco focuses on Mandarin.
So my process questions, how do you feel about stepping into the middle of this, in the Facebook, Twitter world?
I think it'll be refreshing for my friends to see that I post other things besides food.
And how's your schedule?
Since I moved to Boston, I don't work full-time. My brother and I run a consulting company. My brother works full-time. I just take referrals. I don't actively seek work, so I actually have a lot of time. I've spent more of my time as a house husband since we've arrived, so I think my schedule looks good.
Interesting. Okay, are there, I guess I'm gonna, you've- Are there, I guess I'm gonna, you've lived here longer, but clearly have not been active, particularly, as I gather from what you've said, at least in politics or local government. So do you recognize the, what I'm gonna say is, the combination of financial fiscal issues and politics that goes along with Proposition Two and a Half?
I'm not well-versed, to be frank, but I...
Maybe that's an asset.
Well, I was gonna say, in my professional career, we're never well-versed in anything. We just jump into the clients and get the facts and then figure out the solution from the facts.
Okay.
So I hope that that's an asset.
Sounds like a good place to start.
Could I, may I just ask, what sort of clientele does the AC3 group, without identifying specific clients, what is your general consulting practice?
Pharmaceutical companies right now. So we help them with the lifecycle product of their drugs, portfolio, the strategy, the brand, marketing. So that's our current focus. I've also focused on various industries, on revenue generation, so helping improve sales and marketing techniques, and that's not limited to pharmaceutical companies.
And that was at AC3, or I see you're also at Price Waterhouse prior to that?
Yeah, at Price Waterhouse Coopers, I did operational improvements, performance improvements. I didn't really focus on revenue generation. I'm currently focused on revenue generation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any final questions for Mr. Chang? Then, thank you very much. We appreciate your interest, and again, I will repeat that we are very, very fortunate to have folks with such excellent qualifications coming forward, offering to volunteer their time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Shall we? We're gonna take a quick break and open some windows. It turns out that the air conditioning is broken, in case people in the room are feeling warm. Best we can do right now is take advantage of the fact that this environmentally sophisticated building has operable windows. It may not solve the problem, but definitely will help. Okay. I'm gonna wait for Selectman Wyschinski to join us, and we'll continue our interviews in a moment. Okay. The next person on my list is Ms. Cohen. Who I believe it will be safe to say are not a new, is not a newcomer to Brookline.
No, I'm not a newcomer.
So please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Override Study Committee.
I came off the boat, you know, not the Mayflower, in 1969. And I, we decided, was only a couple, my husband and myself, and we decided to live in Brookline, and we never left. All those years, you know, I know I could have gotten a much bigger house with many more acres somewhere else, but I always thought that Brookline is a unique, superb town where I want to live and I want to raise my children. And just, I don't know if it says something about Brookline, about our household or about both, but my adult's children have come back to me and they live in Brookline. So I don't think, no one can recommend Brookline more, but actually lately what's happening, that in College Corner, every single family house becomes a five-family condominium with so many children, I don't recommend it anymore. I just don't wanna, I keep quiet about. I don't work anymore, but I was a teacher for 40 years. I believe that not only teachers, but all adults in a child's life have a responsibility to help this child to become a relatively happy adult. This was my philosophy. The first thing I always told my children, if they were six, the first, they were all my children. I said, "I love you." And from "I love you," everything else came. And then there were many demands after that. Believe me, I was quite a demanding teacher. But I did love them, and it was genuine, and the children knew that. I worked for 40 years while being in Brookline, and many times more than one job, so I really had no time to volunteer, to do anything that beyond the things that I had to do running a household and working. But now that I don't work anymore for five years, I just said, "Well, it's a time, it's time to give back to this great community that I really love and care for." And my children went through the Brookline school system, all three of them, and now I have five grandchildren who are in the Brookline school system. It's true, I don't send children anymore to school, to the school, but, and I know somebody says, "Well, why do you have to live in Brookline, or why are you willing to pay Brookline taxes for that?" I really don't understand that question. That means that it's only me, my children, and what happened to everybody else? I mean, I just don't understand the thought of, "I don't want to pay the taxes that Brookline demands just because my children don't go to the Brookline school system." And that's it.
So, what, you said you taught in grades, many grades, is that correct?
Yeah, I taught at BU for a while, but I really liked the high school kids more.
So high school's your specialty?
High school's my specialty, but I did work with very young ones, too.
Okay. Questions from members of the board? Selectman Goldstein?
Sure. Thank you very much for your application and for your evident love of the town. So you've heard my question, which is about biases. But again, I wanna stress, when I ask about biases, it's not in the negative sense of the word. There are people we've interviewed who have confessed to certain early ideas about where they think this should, process should end up, and I'm interested in those ideas as much as I am about people who are, come to it with a completely blank slate.
A blank slate. I'm too old for a blank slate.
Good.
So I definitely don't have...
I appreciate that honesty.
Biases, I do not believe in the sentence, "I want to give you my objective opinion." I never understand why people use that, because no opinion can be objective, but people do use it a lot as a sentence that God knows what it says, 'cause I don't. The reason... I'm trying to think, do I wanna convince you that I don't have biases, or I really don't want to?
That's what I don't want you to worry about. I want you to know me what you really...
Okay, right, no, no. I'm only kidding. I do, without sense of humor, you cannot teach 40 years and come out saying. The thing is, the reason I, and I wanted to actually work in this committee, or to hear, how does one in a town that I love and care for, how do we keep some kind of a balance between doing for the children all we can give and still keep some kind of fiscal sanity, because the stories from Detroit are not that encouraging? So, does it mean I have biases? I really don't know.
Thank you.
It's hard for me to judge.
Selectman Binka.
Yes, thank you. You heard my question, and that is, is there a particular issue or issues that you might wanna carve out if you were on the committee that would fit your interests and your skills, your expertise?
Well, my expertise, I'm not really in finances, 'cause children is never a good financial, you know, program or plan. But beside the fact that I did, I taught from first grade to 12 in, you know, children this age, I'm quite familiar with the age and so on. I would, I would love to be able to see what can we do with this, Brookline has a problem. Just in the tab, it was that it has so many children, where they cannot be left in the garden in June, in January. So I would like to be able to find, to help find a balance between the best education we can give and still have some fiscal responsibilities, because there is just that much money. I mean, if we had all the money, maybe we would build a new devotion, a new peers, but we don't. So where, with whatever money that the override, if it's voted, and the way I know Brookline residents since 69, most will vote for, you know, the override. I always did. That's okay, from my point of view, so this is my bias, I did, yeah. I do, I want children to have a very good education, but on the other hand, becoming a senior in Brookline, I always also do understand that we need to keep it fiscal responsible.
Thank you.
Selectman Daley.
Well, I think she's answered my question already, which was, you have, from your children going through and now grandchildren, you must have quite a bit of familiarity with our schools and what we offer and have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, there are some things I liked more, some things I liked less, no doubt about. I think, but on the other hand, everything can always improve, yeah.
Selectman Wyschinski, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My process question, you'd be stepping into the eye of the storm in a very high-profile, very public way. How do you feel about that and being in that kind of position?
I don't know. Am I supposed to be intimidated by it, or what? I mean, I don't know. I've never done it. I'm a simple woman. I say what I mean, I mean what I say. And that goes, I always demanded it from my biological children and my students. I say, "Do not say it. Don't say sorry if you don't mean it. I'd rather you say nothing. Keep it for later. Come 10 years from now, back to me and say it." So I don't, I had a, I was on Facebook 'cause I wanted to see what my grandchildren, but I found out that I don't understand even what they're writing there, so I don't. So what do I have to look on Facebook for, right? And I do not tweet.
Tweet.
No tweets.
Or tweet.
No, yeah, no. I, yeah, that's it. I'm an old woman, and I don't apologize for it.
And you have no reason to, may I say?
And I presume your schedule...
Right, and I do have time. When I worked, I would have not had the time to put into it, so.
Well, again, I wanna say thank you. We are truly astonished at the quality and variety of people who are coming forward, who, like you, have lived here for a long time, and we never had you offered to be part of one of the public committees before. So, welcome, and thank you very much for your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next person is Chad Ellis.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome, and tell us about yourself and why you would like to be part of this.
Okay. I'll start by saying that I don't normally come to interviews dressed like this, but I thought I would contribute to the greening by cycling here.
Okay.
I've been a Brookline resident for about eight years now. I have two daughters in Runcle School. I am a town meeting member and know many of you through that. I first got involved in town politics in my capacity as Yellow House Guy and a butter to Runcle School during the Runcle renovation project. Enjoyed that experience a lot. I thought it was very interesting. That and some conversations led me to running for town meeting, and similar engagement led me to wanting to be part of this committee.
Okay. Selectman Goldstein.
Thank you, Chad, and thank you for being a glutton for punishment. Chad was at ground zero in much of the Runcle conversations.
Yes, yes, we know. He lived through a butterhood.
So you've heard my question, and I imagine you might have some ideas about how you'd like to see this come up, just knowing you, you know, are you pro neighborhood school model, for example?
Well, so I, you know, we moved to Brookline because of the schools. We were living in Jamaica Plain, and like a lot of people, we had the conversation, private school or somewhere like Brookline, and we chose Brookline. Part of that is because I feel very strongly about public schools. I went to public schools myself. I am a strong supporter of public schools and ideally wanted my kids to go to public schools, so that underlay our choice. Now, I went to a school system that was sort of neighborhood, but not neighborhood the way Brookline is. It worked very well for me. We had K through six, and then junior high school, and then high school, and I took a bus every day that I went to school. So for me, the quality of the schools, the quality of the education is more important than specifically a neighborhood model, but no surprise, I didn't move in next door to Runcle totally by accident. I like it that my kids walk next door to go to school. That's, you know, to me, it's a wonderful thing, but it was not the reason that we chose Runcle or Brookline.
Thank you.
Okay. Selectman Binka.
Thank you, and you've heard my question, and that is, if you were a member of the committee, is there a particular issue or are there issues that you would wanna carve out or see yourself carving out that would best fit your expertise and your interests?
To some extent. I mean, I think it'll depend a lot on the makeup of the committee. After hearing a couple of the people who came before me, I'm less tempted to say finance and projections and analysis, which is something I've spent a fair amount of my career doing and I'm good at, but they may well be better. I'm something of a generalist. I've run a marketing department, I've been a CFO, I run my own small company, and I'm also a mediator. So I think that what I would bring to the table is more an ability to look at a number of very complex questions, both strategic and quantitative, and to think about them holistically, as well as to help other members of the committee who may have different strengths and weaknesses. I've spent a lot of my time over the years working, for example, with people who are not as comfortable with financial projections, helping them to understand what the critical questions are, what the analysis is. So rather than just doing the analysis, but being able to make sure that an entire team of people is able to operate, you know, on a strong footing. So that's more where I would say that I would bring strengths to the table, rather than saying, you know, "Here's an area that I would like to carve..." than saying, you know, here's an area that I would like to carve out. Thank you.
And, and I will just observe that I, um, took note of your experience as a mediator and thought that might actually be a pretty good quality to have on one of these groups.
Yeah, I, I had the same, I had the same thought. I mean, not just within the, the committee itself, but we, you know, we need to mesh a very broad set of interests with very different stakeholders. And that's what a mediator does. I mean, you know, you, you have to really be able to see things from other people's perspectives. You need to be able to frame a conversation in a way that people who are coming from very different perspectives can understand and can feel heard, um, and can, can appreciate also the perspectives that aren't their own. So I, I do think that's something that I would bring to the table.
And I'm gonna just observe that it, in this context, it's a slightly different thing from what you can do in private sector because it's all done in public and I'm beginning to have my own sort of concept about the messy transparency we're trying to observe.
I watched...
Which is to say, you watch us and we are making sausage or scrambled something or other, and with luck, it becomes an omelet, or a good omelet, anyway, so.
Yeah, I liked your comment, that we were watching on TV, uh, the B-Space meeting, so I saw your reference to, to murky transparency.
Oh, try, yes, murky transparency, well, we're, we're working on that. Anyway, Selectmen Daly? Well, I know Chad is very familiar with the, the Runcle at least, and, um, I, I will say, uh, through the whole process of the renovation there, you were a voice of sanity. So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't realize at first that you were a trained mediator, I thought you were just like...
I wasn't then.
Just the same person.
I wasn't, I actually became a trained mediator just a couple of years ago, so.
Selectmen Washinsky?
So, um, I guess my questions, the process ones, are you, are you ready to step it up to the next level?
Uh, well, do you mean in terms of being in the, the Facebook and Twitter world?
Being in the public eye?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me, I'm, I'm very comfortable.
And having the time to be in the public eye, I think we really are saying this is gonna be a time commitment.
Yeah, no, I, I, my, my wife and I have joked that I'm gonna regret this, and my, my policy, by the way, Nancy, I should tell you, since you got me started on all this, is to blame you for everything. So, if, if you do choose me to do this...
Lots of people do.
And I have any regrets, it'll all be on Nancy. Um, I, I have the time, I mean, it, it will be challenging, as I imagine it will be for almost everybody who, who wants to do this. Um, but I, I've spent a fair amount of time thinking about whether I can make this commitment, and I'm, I'm ready to make it. Um, it won't be trivial, but it, it is something that I'm ready to do.
Okay, any follow-ups from members of the board?
Well, thank you very much, and I'm not going to repeat again, but I have to say repeatedly, we do appreciate, right, all the folks who are willing to come forward and, and offer their time and services, and we thank you. Okay, our next candidate is Carol Caiman. And you have the unfortunate situation of having listened through everything, so we don't even have to tell you the questions anymore, but, welcome, and please tell us a bit about yourself and why you're interested in the business.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Um, my husband and I moved to Brookline six years ago, having grown up in the Boston area. Uh, I grew up in Dorchester, Mattapan, went to Boston University, um, and spent some time in Brookline in those days, going to Hebrew High School and Hebrew College that at that time was on Haw Street. So had many friends as a young person in Brookline and Newton. Thirty-five years ago, I moved, I married and moved with my husband to Phoenix, Arizona, um, which, quite frankly, I thought I was on the moon, uh, having never really been west of New York City at the time. Um, and in Phoenix, I, uh, and in Arizona, I spent, uh, many years working in state government. I worked for Governor Bruce Babbitt, directing his, the Governor's Office of Children. Um, I was administrator of the Children and Youth Administration in Arizona, which is like the Department of Children and Families here in Massachusetts. Um, in tho, in those capacities, I dealt quite a bit with state government, with legislators, with consensus building, with advising a governor and advising, um, uh, and the Director of the Department of Economic Security, where I was located, on some pretty sticky issues involving child welfare, child abuse, foster care, those kinds of issues. Um, I spent, uh, during that period of time, I also was on the, uh, school board of, uh, in Phoenix, a school board, Matt, the Madison School Board, which was a K-8 school board of about 5,000 kids, uh, did, involved in an override when I was president of the board, so got familiar with that whole process. Um, was, uh, and for the last 20 years, which is hard to say, was, uh, president of a nonprofit organization that I founded in Arizona called Children's Action Alliance, that did policy and advocacy on behalf of low-income children and families. Um, prior to all this, when I was living in Boston, uh, before I moved to Arizona, I did teach, I taught in Ashland for a couple of years in fourth grade, um, and, uh, and consider myself an educator. I consider myself certainly an administrator. I right now, uh, am a principal in Carol Caiman Consulting, um, do quite a bit of consulting with nonprofit organizations in the state and, uh, it locally on strategic planning and on, uh, fund development and those kinds of issues. Um, I, uh, we, we moved, I, I say back to Brookline. I didn't live in Brookline, but when we moved to this part of the world, my husband and I decide, my, we have two sons who are, uh, both adult sons, both of whom live in this part of the world. One son is a doctor at Children's Hospital, who recently adopted a little baby who's three months old, and they are considering moving to Brookline. So I have a bit of a stake in, uh, in the, in the community, have always admired the Brookline school system for years and years. I lusted after it as a kid, um, and when we moved back here six years ago, there was no doubt that this was the town that I wanted to live in. I wanted to live here because it is a town, because it's a community, and I think the previous person spoke about the idea of neighborhood schools. It's something that in the Madison District that I lived in and that I was on the board of, we did have neighborhood schools and we tried to preserve them with great difficulty. So, having known, having experienced that. So, um, that is, I right now chair, uh, I'm on the board of Mass Budget and Policy Center and chair what's called the Massachusetts Kids Count Advisory Council, uh, and I'm on a board, on the, on the board of a number of other organizations. That's who I am.
Well, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change my question a little bit, because nobody's confessing to any biases tonight, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna phrase it this way, I'm gonna say, you, you're a consultant, do you have a particular ideology when you, when you consult with a school system, and, uh, is there a, a particular ideology that, that you would expect to, uh, bring to the, to this, this particular committee?
I think that in this case, I think that what I do bring, I mean, is, I, I think I do bring fresh eyes. Um, I'm familiar, I've, I've read about, uh, the B-Space Committee, I've, I've read what they've said, I understand some of the issues that are involved, I understand some of the options that are on the table, I think I understand the pluses and minuses of each, but I truly can say that I do not have any pre, at this point, any preconceived idea of, of what this, what, what should happen, other than, I mentioned my idea of neighborhood schools. I like that idea. And, and the idea of, and it's, and it's corny, but, but it's about kids, it's about families, and it's about how it is that we can continue the Brookline tradition of having not just good schools. Good is not good enough, you know, it's, it's better than good, it's the best schools. And in a community atmosphere, where we support each other and where we support the schools, and creating a system that is, um, and, and, and this is, this is, this is something that I'm sure will be grappled with, how you create a system where the schools are economically diverse, where, where there's safety, where kids are safe when they're dropped off and those kinds of things. I'm interested in those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Uh, you also heard my question, uh, to, uh, to the other individuals, and that is, if you were a member of the committee, is there a particular issue or issues that you could see yourself carving out that, uh, would fit your background, your expertise, your interests, and that would be relevant to what the committee will be doing?
Well, I, I consider, as I said before, I consider myself an educator, so I, I kind of have that cap on. I've also done a lot of work with financial projections, demographic projections, um, working for city government, I'm, don't know if I mentioned that, I did spend almost two years working for city government for Mayor Terry Goddard at the time, and I headed the, um, I was a special assistant to him for human services and education. And so, I have experienced a lot of demogra, and, and Phoenix was growing by leaps and bounds, the demographic projections that were done, the financial projections that were done, I was involved with that. But I, I think that I could be helpful there, I think probably the area that I'd be most helpful is, is having worked in the political world, how it is you frame what we know is best for kids and families and the schools into the political context of where we are now in Brookline, and how you sell that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Selectmen Daly?
Yeah, I wonder, since you've been back, I know you have, uh, a general idea of the reputation of the Brookline schools and so forth, but have you, uh, had the opportunity to become, uh, more familiar with any of the details of the schools and the programs we have in the schools?
I've been familiar, I've talked with people, uh, a lot about the preschools, um, that's an area that I know a lot about, the preschools in Brookline. I have spoken to a number of people, parents at, uh, at various events about what's going on in the schools, but I haven't been involved in any substantive way, any policy kinds of ways in the, in, in the Brookline schools, other than talking with a lot of people about the various challenges that exist in the various schools and what the future looks like.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll skip my question about being comfortable and, and, and out, out front, because it sounds like as the head of a state agency and, and the head of a school board, you've, you've done there, you've done that, you've been there. Um, so I'll ask about your schedule, how does it look, will you have the time to devote to this committee, um, and it's gonna be a substantial investment in that?
Yes, well, I've, I've thought long and hard about that, and the answer to that question is yes. I am a consultant, uh, as a consultant, I can, I'm able to schedule my own time, um, uh, accordingly. Uh, this would be a priority where I selected, um, I have other commitments, but again, I could work my other commitments around, um, the needs of this committee.
Um, I'd like to follow up a little bit about your experience as an educator. Do you feel, uh, I'm thinking of your perspective as a little bit of an outsider, but clearly someone with professional background and expertise, um, are you thinking or have you thought about the kinds of issues that will be before the public eventually, and, and that may have to do with whether or not there are changes in the configuration of the grades, um, the way we have them now? Um, I, I can't, I, I'm not saying that this is gonna be a recommendation, but, um, there, I think what I want to do is say there are trade-offs...
Yes.
...in terms of cost, uh, and facilities, and some of those trade-offs involve the possibility of a different set of grade configurations, that some are cheaper to construct and some are more expensive.
Um, actually, what's interesting, we dealt, I dealt with that back in Phoenix because we had K-4 schools, and then we had five 8 schools. And we had to change that whole thing, and we had a couple of schools that were K-8, and then a few schools that were K-4. So, I went through, as, as, as the school board member at that time, and actually as president of the board, we dealt with those issues. What made most sense, what made most sense for the children, what the research said about middle schools, what the research said about the, at, the advantages of having K-8 schools, and the disadvantages, and also the financial implications. So, I've been through that, different school system, but very much like the Madison School District is, it reminds, reminds me a lot of Brookline, it was part of Phoenix, it kind of tucked away, and it was a, it was a, a pretty affluent community with a, a, a couple of schools that were very, very diverse. And it was figuring out how to work all those schools together and figure out, when we did the override, which we did, how it was that we were gonna configure, and there are, it was, it was, it was very similar to what I've read that's being discussed right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow-up questions?
No, just the comment that this is probably gonna be the only applicant who's in the Arizona State University College of Education Hall of Fame.
Okay.
And I, and I'll, I'll surmise one difference in, in Madison, is you had, actually had a site, if you had to build a school, you had land to do it. There was, I presume there was more land?
Oh, yes, there, there was land.
We don't have that.
Yes.
Okay, well, again, we're, uh, we're delighted to have so many people with such wonderful backgrounds come forward, and we definitely appreciate the fact that you came back from Arizona to Brookline.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next is Mr. Lang. And for people who are in the room, we are halfway through. This is the midpoint.
So I'm the moderate one.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm Kevin Lang. Uh, in my professional life, I'm a professor of economics at Boston University. Uh, my professional work focuses on labor economics and the economics of education, but I've also written on public finance, economic demography, econometrics, which is the application of statistics to economic issues. Um, as I suspect you all know, I have a long history in public affairs in Brookline. Uh, I was on what was not called the Override Study Committee, but was the original Override Study Committee in 1993, 94, which started in August and actually had a February 15th deadline. Um, so you're giving this group an extra two weeks. Um, I, uh, I've spent, uh, 20-odd years as a member of Town Meeting. I spent 13 years on the, uh, school committee, and during that, almost that entire time, I was on the Town School Partnership Committee. Uh, I was involved in designing a lot of our capital policies, both coming out of the recommendations from FPAC, the original Override Study Committee, and serving on the Capital Policies Committee. Uh, for the, uh, Brookline High School debt exclusion, I designed the original bond issue. Fortunately, the laws got changed after the override, uh, sorry, the debt exclusion vote, so that we were able to do something more sensible than the shenanigans I had to do to get something that worked. Um, and let me stop there, since I think you know my history, actually.
Okay, well, Selectmen Goldstein, can you think of something to ask Mr. Lang?
Sure, I can, I can think hard. Uh, Kevin, thank you, uh, for, for all your years of dedication to the town and for, for volunteering for this, uh, combat duty too. Um, so, I, I, I wanna ask you, similar to the last applicant, more about ideology than anything else. I think I know what your ideologies are, but, put, you know, put it in, in, in definitive terms, and, and what, what do you believe in, and, and how do you think what you believe in might translate into a, a solution?
Okay, sure, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I should say in response to your original question, when I was on a National Academy of Sciences panel, they said, "The way, the way we want you to answer this is, what would the New York Times expect you to say on this issue?" And I said, "I doubt the New York Times would expect anything, but let me tell you what the Brookline tab expects." Um, I, I think the issue is very much one of, of the institutional role that you're playing in a particular time, right? The role, the role of this committee is to help you in the process of allowing the voters to determine the level and, to some extent, the mix of public services, and to ensure them that they are going to be provided in the most efficient way, and that the way of collecting the revenue is as equitable and as efficient as possible, right? That's the institutional role, and that would be what I would be committed to advising you about. If the end of serving on this committee, intense committee for six months, which means everyone giving up a lot of their lives, is a large majority of the people in Brookline being dissatisfied with the outcome of the process, then the committee will have failed, and I will have to take responsibility as a member of that committee for the failure. So, I will be looking to help advise you on how to resolve those, how to answer those questions.
Okay, any early ideas about neighborhood school models, uh, need for a second high school, and...
Actually not, I mean, when I, when I left the school committee, I told people, both on the board of Selectmen and on the school committee, "You know my phone number, if you want my advice, call me." But, but with the exception of one issue which involved a lot, I think many of you know what it is, but involved some significant difficulties for, for a friend, um, I have not involved myself at all in... all in school issues for the last four years, and this is the first time that people have got on the phone and called me and said, you know, "We'd like you to bring back your expertise," and I'm willing to do so. Thank you.
Selectmen Benka.
And Kevin, you've heard my question, and that is, what are the issues or issues that you would think you'd want to carve out, or might want to carve out, if you were a member of this committee?
Sure, I mean, obviously, what I most want to do is draw on my technical expertise. I have skills in the areas of statistics that there may be other applicants who have, but, which I would think I would be unusually strong. That means whether it's a matter of using economic demography, or at least critiquing other people's models, I have, I have that skill. I have expertise in the economics of education, I can bring, I have to say, I don't know the literature on neighborhood schools, but I'm quite capable of reading it. I have had a lot of experience within Brookline, looking at bond issues and capital policies, and I suspect, without having seen what's changed over the last four years, there's some things we can do there as well.
Thank you.
Selectmen Daley.
Yes, I know that Kevin is very familiar with the schools and everything, so I think he's already answered my question, but I will say, I think you wrote a lot of that last report, so that, that may, didn't you?
The 1994 report?
Yeah.
It's actually not the last, we had one in between, but yes, I did write a lot of it.
That may be the role you want to slate them into.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
So how does your schedule look?
You're not going to ask me if I can handle the limelight?
I know you can handle the limelight.
My schedule looks terrible. I work seven days a week, but I manage to be chair of the school committee and chair of my department, BU, at the same time while having my other responsibilities. I'm no longer chair of the school committee or even on the school committee, I'm no longer on Town Meeting, I'm no longer chair of my department, so I think if, if you choose to appoint me, I will make the commitment to find the time to make this happen. I've done it in the past, and I will do it again.
I know that you've given a fair amount of thought, and in fact, have written about the sort of economic dynamic of tax limitations like Prop 2 and 1/2, and understand probably better than many what we would be thinking about in terms of the impacts of whatever capital projects we propose, and frankly, for every classroom, there has to be a teacher, and so therefore, there will be costs with, associated with operations. So I'm just interested to know whether you've thought at all about those implications of this particular dynamic situation.
Well, I think that goes, goes back to my answer to Mr. Goldstein, right? It's a matter of getting those numbers right. I mean, we, we do know, and that doesn't mean this applies to Brookline, we do know that by and large, property values have gone up in communities that have been unconstrained by Proposition 2 and 1/2. We know that by and large, property values have gone up in places that have increased their spending on education. There's also no question that you can go too far, right? You raise taxes enough to buy, you know, gold-plated whatever, then property values are going to go down. So this committee is really about helping you figure out where that balances, you know, where are the taxes too high to merit the value that the community places on the services, you know, and when are taxes, other fees increases merited because of the value that the community places on the additional services? That's, that's what we have to help you figure out, and I cannot tell you in advance where we stand.
Well said. Okay, any other follow-ups? Then thank you for returning to an area where I know you are familiar, and we do appreciate your having the time now to come back again.
Thank you very much.
Next person is Carol Levin.
Good evening.
Good morning.
So, tell us about yourself and why you would like to join this band.
I've just celebrated my 23rd anniversary as a resident of Brookline. I have two children who have both graduated from Brookline High School, and my youngest is starting his sophomore year at Vanderbilt, and he's been home for the summer, and he has said over and over, "Mom, Brookline is such an unusual place, I'm so glad that this is where you and Dad chose to raise us, because it gives such a unique experience." Over my children's journey through the Brookline school system, I was always very involved in PTO, first at Runcle and then at the high school, and now that my children are out of the school, I've been looking for a way to get involved in the community in a different capacity, and this particular committee seemed particularly well-suited to my skillset and interests, so. As far as my professional background, I usually tell people I'm on my ninth life in, in the real estate world. My original background is in commercial real estate finance. I worked for an institutional investor in an era before that was a dirty word, and in a time when things were much more rigorous and less freewheeling. So my approach to finance is probably a little bit more, what I would like to say is institutional and conservative than some people who may have been coming through the investment world now. After working as an investor for many years, I moved over to the private side and was actually a borrower, working for private real estate investors and developers, helping them with their financing. For the last almost 20 years, I've been a real estate consultant to the healthcare industry. I've been helping hospitals as they've negotiated this time of tremendous turmoil and transition in the healthcare industry, and have really helped them learn how it is that they can utilize real estate in their facilities, and how they can make decisions about the deployment of capital, how they can weigh alternatives that are presented to them, and helping them get outside their comfort zone and think outside the box. So it's that facility and real estate component I think I can be of particular assistance with.
Okay.
All right, well, I bet you know what's coming. So without further ado, there's been a lot about this decision already in the press and on Brookline Access Television and other sources, Facebook included. Do you have any early ideas about which solution is best and which direction we ought to be headed in? And you can think of that as a bias, you can think of it as an ideology, or you can think of it as a particular colored t-shirt that you like to wear?
Well, I think my initial bias has to do with the process, and that is, I believe it's very important to challenge the status quo and think outside the box, and encourage people to think about approaches to solutions, approaches to problems and solutions that they may not have considered previously. So I think that's the most important thing. As far as neighborhood schools, I am very satisfied with the experience that my children had here in Brookline. I think there's a lot to be said for neighborhood schools, and in fact, I could see even considering having sub-neighborhood schools. I understand many decades ago, there was a K-1 at the high school. I don't know if that approach has been, you know, peeling off the younger grades to separate locations is a, is an approach that's been considered. You know, I recognize that I'm not on the space committee, this is the override committee, and I would view my job as to asking challenging, thought-provoking questions to the proposals that are coming from the space committee, is my understanding of the role of this committee.
Thank you.
Selectmen Benka.
You've probably touched on this question already in that response, but are there any particular issues that you think you might want to carve out that would fit your interests and your expertise, if you were a member of this committee?
Certainly. Well, though I am well-versed in spreadsheets and would certainly have opinions about any sets of assumptions that people would present and associate, you know, with any financial analysis, I think my greatest value-added and the thing that would interest me would have to do with the evaluation of the impact of various facility alternatives that you're considering on both the capital and operational budgets. Those are the sort of issues I'm accustomed to helping healthcare institutions, which are nonprofits for the most part here in eastern Massachusetts, deal with, and I think that would be my, probably my best area to contribute to.
Thank you.
Selectmen Daley?
Yeah, well, Carol's daughter and mine went all through Runcle together and were good friends, so I know she's very familiar with the school system, but let me, let me ask, so let me ask a different question. I know a lot of people, when they get to our stage and the kids are out of school, start looking more, start thinking more negatively toward tax increases that largely benefits the schools, and I'm wondering, you know, if you have any thoughts on that, that you've, stuff you've heard from your neighbors or concerns, or, you know, what would be the approach?
Well, it's interesting, this past weekend, we have a home out in the Berkshires, and we went to a Town Meeting where they were discussing building a pre-K through K school for this town for a million dollars, and it was in a meeting just attended by second homeowners, and I was just amazed at the number of people who said, "No, we won't do it." And my husband and I both looked at each other, and I was like, "We have an obligation for the residents of this community, the young families here, to make sure that they get a good educational experience." So I very much feel that paying my taxes is a civic responsibility, I am not biased against tax increases, though I think people's perceptions of relative tax levels does have some impact on real estate values. I think there's a lot of other non-financial attributes that are incredibly important that drive people to Brookline and drive our property values. So I have, I'm not going to say, "Whatever you want, I'm going to give you." I, you know, am disciplined in my approach towards, both at a personal level and in the clients that I advise, you know, I'm sensitive that it's not a blank check and you have to be responsible and understand and get a good return on your investment, and that there's many non-financial aspects to that return, so. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Selectmen Wyszynski.
So my, my process questions, I note that you've been involved in PTO, so you've been involved at some level.
Right.
In Town Affairs, and, but most of your other experience has been in a responsible position in the private sector. How do you feel about getting into such a public role and in this very, in the Facebook, Twitter world?
Well, I look forward to being something other than Alec and Rebecca's mom in the town of Brookline, and at this stage of my life, I'm ready for it, you know? I'm, I'm an empty nester, I'm self-employed, as I have been for 20 years, so I have a lot of flexibility and control over my time, and I actually enjoy getting out front of people and discussing ideas and exchanging and give and take, so bring it on.
Okay, and you, I think you answered the question, but I'll ask it explicitly, your schedule permits you to spend?
Yes, yes, I have control.
And I do think you have responded somewhat to my question, which is an understanding of tax limitation and Prop 2 and 1/2 and what it actually means in terms of real estate values and property taxes, so I'm not going to ask it again unless there's something you want to add.
No, I did take the time over the last few days to brush up on Prop 2 and 1/2, along with some other financial materials that the town puts out, and I think these are interesting questions, and I think I would like to say, you know, there was a gentleman before who said he was a mediator, and I understand the attraction of that. I've spent an awful lot of my professional life negotiating transactions, and I think that's very similar to mediating, in that you want everyone to walk away and be happy and satisfied, and it really takes an ability to understand what's of value to the various constituencies and how you can address their concerns, and I think that this committee has a lot of similar work ahead of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for your interest and bringing your skillsets to us, and you'll hear from us in another week or two. Mr. Pets. Whoops, did we lose one? Frank Pets in the room?
Yes, I thought I saw him, but he left the phone.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, well, let's take next person, and we'll see if he's going to rejoin us. Andrew Shalit.
Thank you.
You're going to answer the question without us asking?
Sure, I was going to, I have it all planned out.
Okay, all right.
I think I'll get everyone's question.
Go for it.
Well, we'll see. I'm the youngest of six, so I grew up getting beaten up a lot and learning how to be a peacemaker.
Aha.
My, my older siblings, and that has carried through in, in my career, I've worked in a lot of different areas, and a lot of my work has, has bridged technical and creative, and a lot of my work and volunteer engagements have involved communicating with people, excuse me, who, who may otherwise have trouble understanding each other, whether it's my employees who range from programmers to graphic designers to voice artists, or, you know, fellow board members. I've lived in Brookline for seven years now, I have two children, the older, the older one is going to be a second grader in Pierce next year, and the younger one is going to be entering B at the Lynch Center next year. My older child attended preschool at the Children's Center on Cypress Street, and through that experience, I got to know a lot of families at other schools throughout Brookline, so we know families at Lincoln, we know families at Driscoll, we know families at Lawrence, and we're at Pierce, and we know a lot of, a lot of families at Pierce, obviously. My wife is on the school council there, she's a Town Meeting member. When this came up, as I said, our younger daughter's 2 and 1/2, and my wife said that it was my turn to, to kick in a little bit. I do have biases that I will admit. I, I want Brookline to have the best schools in the country, it's been a little maddening to see an attitude that with the population, population growth and with the financial constraints that supposedly exist in these times, that somehow we can't do for our kids what people were able to do in the 1960s and 1970s and 1980s, that, you know, that Brookline schools are destined to be, you know, not as good as they were for previous generations. I do not want that to be the case, so that's my main bias that I, that I bring here. At the same time, my wife has spent all of her career working in the area of low-income housing and helping homeless people find housing, so we are very aware of the fact that not everyone has the means to do what we can do, and not everyone has the means to, to be able to spare a subway fare every day, let alone have a major tax increase. And that is the difficulty that, that the committee faces, and that I would be honored to have the opportunity to work on, both in how to structure that and in, in how to explain it to people, the need for it, the value of it. The particular work that I would see myself doing on the, on the committee, I love spreadsheets and numbers, I do a lot of kind of big data stuff in my job, and so there's that aspect of it. I also think I could help the committee members get along and, and understand each other. Well, I think there are a lot of mediators who have, or amateur mediators.
As the youngest of six.
I also think I could help the committee members get along and, and understand each other. Well, I think there are a lot of mediators who have, or amateur mediators-
As the youngest of six.
...who have been through here tonight and you can, you can add me to the list. Yes, as the youngest of six. So I, I think that, I think that covers it. And if you have, if I didn't get all of your questions, please let me know. I do have time. I do have time.
All right. Well, you, you are really trying to deprive us of our role in this process. Selectmen Goldstein?
I'll delve, I'll-
Have a new one.
Delve deeper.
He's a good listener, we can add that.
Delve deeper into the biases. So I appreciate, to be honest with you, the bias that you favor a spectacular education system is noble, but I think just about every candidate does express similar sentiment. I appreciate it, but I wouldn't quite call it a bias. Have you followed the debate?
Yeah.
And do you know that we're dealing with some issues such as, you know, the possibility of building a, a new K-8, the possibility of building a second high school and moving to a 7 through 12? Any biases or early ideas about those questions?
You know, it'd be great to build another K-8 if there was a place to put it that made sense. I'm intrigued by, I would rather personally have two high schools than one mammoth high school, personally. I think it'd be great to have another high school up at the Baldwin site, if there's a way to make that work. But, you know, does it work? I don't know. I'm intrigued by the idea of 8 through 12 or 7 through 12 high schools to free up space in the younger, in the, in the smaller schools. The three plus one model seems to be the, the safe choice that works without getting anyone up in arms and, and is affordable. I would love it if my son had more than 15 minutes to eat lunch at Pierce. You know, I would love to actually bring the, the numbers down in some of the schools that are packed to the gills. So, so I have been following it, you know. It seems like there's no perfect solution. I think that we've come a long way in the last couple of months and that there will be one or two options that are good enough that they'll make sense for the town to get behind. You know, I had, I said to my wife a couple of weeks ago, "I want to start a website that is no-on-no petitions." It was really frustrating seeing all of these no, no, nos come up. And granted, some of these things might not be good ideas, but, you know, there, it's nice that, that there are some solutions that people are hopefully feeling they don't have to say no to.
You're not saying no on free speech.
Right, yeah, no, I'm not saying no on free speech, but I have not signed any of the no petitions.
Okay. Selectmen Benka?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, you responded to my question without my asking it, but I, I note that in a, in your role as founder of Learning Touch, you've created children's educational apps. And I was just wondering what, if you could talk a little bit about that?
Um, yeah, it was, you know, a matter of being in the right place at the right time and having, I, I run a little consulting company. And when you have a little consulting company, we do software development. You, you always have either not enough people to do the work, or you have too many people and you have people sitting idle. And it started out as a way to, to put idle hands to work. My son, at that point, was two and a half and had some speech delays. And I saw, I saw, I didn't think anyone else would think of doing children's apps for iPhones. I thought that was a totally wacky idea. And so we'd be out there by ourselves, which we weren't. But I saw it as a way to, to reach out to my son, who wasn't speaking at that point. And it did, you know, it was very gratifying that, you know, I can't tell you what it's like to get an email from a parent who said that her son had never spoken until he used our app and then started verbalizing and vocalizing after playing our app. That's been a privilege to, to be able to do that.
Available through the Apple Store?
Available through the, through the App Store, yes. Learning Touch is-
So I have to ask, this is not on topic particularly, but how did an English major become a software geek?
Well, that's, that's sort of typical-
I'm sorry, I have philosophy majors in my family who are software geeks and I know you follow funny paths. I'm just curious.
You know, I graduated from college, I was doing some, some writing, some, doing some journalism, you know, some, and doing computer writing, because I, I like doing that. And I got hired by one of the companies that I wrote a story about and they got bought by Apple two years later.
Uh-huh, okay.
We did a good job.
Yeah.
I've actually, I just read the biography of Steve Jobs and as you probably know, there's a genius bar at Apple stores.
Yes.
And when the name Genius Bar was proposed to Jobs, he said, "They're not geniuses, they're just geeks." And then the next day, the council for Apple Computer came to the person who had proposed the name Genius Bar and had been slapped down by Steve Jobs. And he told them, "Steve Jobs just told me to go out and copyright or patent the name Genius Bar." So, so it is, you know, I think the, the term is sometimes a little disparaging.
I would feel more comfortable at a geek bar.
Yeah, it wouldn't sell.
All right, Selectmen Daly?
I think he's answered my question.
Okay, Selectmen Wyszynski?
Okay, my process questions, how do you feel about getting into the public arena in a big way?
You know, I've warned my wife and she's aware that, you know, I'll probably be getting a lot more phone calls than, than I'm getting now. And I will need to learn the rules about the intersection of the public meeting law and participating in Facebook discussions. But I'm, you know, prepared to do that.
You'll learn to see your name taken in vain on Facebook.
Right.
And then how about your time, your schedule?
Um, you know, I can make my own schedule because of my work. It'll be a lot of time. I'm sure I will regret it repeatedly. But hey, you know, gotta, gotta do it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We again appreciate the fact that such an interesting group of people are willing to provide us with their volunteer time. And we'll be making our appointments next week and you'll be hearing from us.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Sheen? Sorry about you alphabetical folks. I had promised myself I'd start it with the bottom of the alphabet and I didn't. And having gotten started with the top, I was stuck with having, I should have alternated, I apologize. But anyway, you, you have the pleasure of having heard everybody else, which is either good or bad or boring. Welcome and please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested.
Thank you. I am a mother of two children at Driscoll School, a rising first grader and a rising third grader. And I am also a graduate of Brookline High School. I did not have the pleasure of going to the elementary schools because my mother moved me here actually during the proposition two and a half years, right after it was implemented, because the schools that we were in had suffered a bit. And she knew that Brookline had very strong values, both educational and social values, and was attracted to come here. And I've lived here for 30 years on and off, time away for school and, and other such things. And my husband and I moved back when we were deciding where to raise our family in 2001. And as a little side note, the thing that clinched it for him, he came from Lexington, so he was advocating for Lexington. And what clinched it for, for him was attending my high school reunion and seeing the closeness and the, the sort of quality of the folks and who had come out of there and saying, "I am very comfortable coming to Brookline." So, so here we are. And in my professional life, I've been a real estate consultant for the last 20 years. I now am principal of a firm where we have both a consulting arm and we consult for some of Boston's largest institutions, primarily on land use decisions and capital planning. And I, we also have a development arm where we develop our own account and responsibility for our own performance and feasibility. And my role primarily has, has always been pre-development work, which is financial analysis, feasibility, phasing, finance structure, and as well as public, public outreach and the public processes associated with projects. I've also recently come off a term of being on the zoning board of appeals here in Brookline, which I enjoyed very much and have always sort of carved out a piece of my professional life, as well as my husband, to service to our community. When we lived in Boston, I was on the Landmarks Commission. I've also served on the Museum of Science Board of Overseers. And I very much enjoyed serving on the Board of Appeal and I would very much enjoy serving on this committee as well.
Thank you. Selectmen Goldstein?
Sure. Thanks Lisa for signing up again for another round of service to the town. You know, my question, so you can address biases or ideology or just, you know, what you've heard on the street? Have you signed any petitions?
I have not signed any petitions. And I don't, I don't come with biases in terms of, in terms of any solution. I do, as others have said, come with a bias of quality, quality of education, but also quality of respect for all members of the town. I think that, you know, rising property values and taxes on folks is a, is a prob, sort of an, an issue of our day, where folks are faced with taxes they didn't anticipate. And I think we need to be sensitive to that. I think that, you know, in my role through project development has been, there are two ways of approaching a problem. One is through the, through the cost and, and the, and the solution and the other is, or the problem. And then the other is the solution. How do you find the best way to address the solution? And you need to look at both ends of that to make sure, in, in this case, when you bring a solution to the town of Brookline, to the voters, that you have a, a solution that you know is the responsible one, that you've looked at every avenue from, from, you know, whether it's capital expenses or, or other, other items. And you've, and you've also explored every avenue for alternative funding before you come to the voters and ask them for, for what you feel you need to advocate for.
Thank you.
But in terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of the space issues and the, and the biases associated with that, I don't, I don't have any preconceived notions on the best approach to, to the, the schools' structures in terms of either, you know, K through 8 or, or two high schools. I think that there are many, many solutions that work. I think as long as we have quality and, and high expectations, we can find the right solution.
Great, thank you.
I should have told this group in advance, like I told some of the others. I love the K through 8 model, so anyone who, you know, that's the right answer for me.
Well, and I, I would just caution that it's not really the, the role of the override study committee to make that determination, so. You've heard my question and that is, if you were carving out an area or areas or issues that would match your expertise and your interests, and we're doing something as a member of the override study committee, as part of a task force or a subcommittee, what would you pick?
The capital planning and capital budgeting side, I think that I can be very helpful in, in assessing the recommendation of the B space committee, of helping others understand what it means, both others on the committee and others in the general public. And if, you know, as you, as you've stated, it's not really the role of this committee to, to make those determinations, but I do think that it's certainly an element of it. And I think everything from financial feasibility to, you know, some of my clients are working with very constrained spaces. We work with Children's Hospital, I work with MIT. And, you know, being able to find those type of solutions and understanding some of the constraints and being able to articulate those, I think is a role that I can play.
Thank you.
Selectmen Daly?
Yeah, so I, obviously you're familiar with the schools since your, your kids are there. What do you, do, do you have any sense of, from your neighbors, from your discussions with other people of, you know, whether, whether there are points at which people would say, "No, the taxes are just getting too high"?
It's interesting. We live on a transitional street where there are older folks moving out, younger families moving in. And for the most part, the folks that I interact with are, have moved here because of, you know, because of the reputation of the schools. And not only for this, for the education, but for what that does for the property values. And they sort of take that, that view. So I don't have a lot of interaction with folks who would, who would not vote for this. But I understand, I lived in South Boston for several years, was homeowner there before, as it was transitioning into what it is today, sort of the gentrification. And there, everybody on the street was impacted by rising property values. There was a feeling there that they wouldn't, weren't getting as much as, as I think one might argue you might get here. But it was, it was a very topical and sensitive issue and I know that that exists in Brookline too, and well it should. And that goes to the responsibility of the committee to make sure that if there is an override, that it is, that is as tight as it possibly can be.
Okay, Selectmen Wyszynski?
You've been involved in town affairs on the ZBA, so how do you feel about stepping it up into this very visible position?
I'm very comfortable with that. I, I've worked on many, in addition to the BCA and being on other, other committees, I've, I've been on some very highly visible projects, both for clients and for ourselves. And that's very comfortable.
And your schedule?
My schedule is, as I said, I've carved out sort of time in my life, my structure with my partners to be able to, to participate in this kind of activity. And right now, I am open.
Well, it's going to be, it, it, should you be a part of this group, it will be an interesting transitional experience from being on the ZBA, I will say. Rather, rather different. But again, we do appreciate your interest and bringing your skills and qualifications to offer as a volunteer. And we will be making our choices next Tuesday, so you will hear from us sometime, I hope, by the end of that week.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spiegel? Sorry, I do apologize for you poor S's at the end of the alphabet.
You know, when Frank Pets wasn't here, I was going to raise my hand and say, "Could I be Frank Pets?" I didn't raise my hand in time, Stanley Spiegel.
But we might have figured out who you were.
Well, what the heck? I would have faked you out, I might have. Well, I guess you've seen my application, you know, I moved here in 1977, just, 1978, just before the great blizzard of 78. Been a town meeting member for 32 years and on the advisory committee, haven't helped me for 27. So I've learned a few things about budgeting and about Prop 2 and 1/2. I think I understand that taxation limitation very well. And about local politics. I've been around for, and to varying degrees, active in all four override campaigns, the two general overrides and the two debt exclusions. I think in, and here I'm, I'm going to be perhaps preaching to you folks, but I think as you develop the override study committee, whether I'm on it or not, you do need members who know the town, know its politics, are familiar with pedagogy, know something about construction and timetables and finance. And you need balance, I was going to say diversity, that may be a charged term, but you need balance. Skepticism, because I think the public will be skeptic, skeptics as far as looking at the amount of the override. And collegiality, and I want to stress collegiality because that's what makes a committee go. I've been on the advisory committee, as you know, for 27 years and several of you have been on the advisory committee and understand how important that is, how good Sandy Gadsby, our moderator, is, and I trust you folks will be, in choosing people who work well together, respect each other, or don't have, are not on high horses or low horses, but just work in a collegial way. And that makes working together a pleasure, as it's been on the advisory committee. I don't know that a debt exclusion override is going to come before us in time for the fiscal 15. I'm not sure about that. But I did want to say that my understanding is that there are two ways to proceed on a debt exclusion. One would be to fund the devotional renovation under existing CIP funds and the expansion of both in the elementary and later the high school level. of both in the elementary and later the high school level by an override. A different model would be to, to fund devotion by an override, which would free up a fair amount of cash so that the more controversial thing that would be faced down the road would not require an override vote. There are advantages to that, there may be disadvantages, but it's just a thought I wanted to share with you. I don't think it, it should be a given that just because we can do it, that we fund devotion out of CIP funds. It might be a virtue. It might be the case that we need an override anyway for the second debt exclusion, but it would be a smaller override if the devotion can be handled by an override, because there'd be, at least some of the cost would be available then in our budget. So that's, that's one thought that I had. As far as the general override goes, again, you are charged with setting the terms and the amount of the override, and you're cognizant that Brookline's taxes are already high, which does not mean I'm a no new tax person by any means. And I think, I understand, having been through four overrides, the importance of crafting an override that is defensible, that it has to be carefully crafted and defended on the basis of economic necessity for things that the town needs. I'm basically echoing what, what Kevin Lang said. What will taxpayers support and at what cost? And what they will support, I think in part depends on the spade work that's done in making sure that we've utilized all possible resources, resources to minimize the amount of the override while at the same time having the override do what we need it to do. I mention that because just over this past weekend, I spent a little bit of time looking at a Department of Education spreadsheet that gives school costs from various communities. And some of the things I found raised some questions in my mind, which I'll share with you. As I share them, I want to emphasize that I'm not sure that the categories from town to town are defined identically, nor that the needs are the same, that is, is Brookline's needs the same as Newton's or Wellesley's or Lexington's or, or Needham's? These are the ones I compared with Brookline. And I found in every one of them, on a per pupil basis, Brookline schools' administration costs are a minimum of, let me see if I have the numbers in front of me, well, of the order of, in one case, 45%, where 45% on a per student basis higher than Newton is for administration. And if you think that's because of economy of scale, because Newton has a bigger system, when you compare us with Wellesley, again, a different town with different needs, we are 98% higher, 98% higher than Newton in administration. Now, I don't know if you've looked-
Wellesley, yes.
Just for completeness, for Needham, we're 28% higher, for Lexington, 35% higher. So we're higher, and those are the only communities I compared us with. Now, there may be reasons for this. I certainly don't, and haven't had a chance to speak to people in the school community to find out why this might be the case. So I, it, it may be perfectly reasonable, but it raises a question. We're also higher in, in operations and maintenance by a considerable amount for these various communities. And doing a back-of-the-envelope calculation, I found that if we could, and I don't know that we can, but if we could reduce our per pupil expenditures for both administration and operation and maintenance, those two categories, to the same level as Newton, we would be able to take $3.4 million, now being expended for those two purposes, out of the school budget, and use them to fund certainly 26 new classroom students, teachers, plus other auxiliary services that might support services. This may not be a fair comparison. I'm the first to admit that, because I, I haven't done the spade work to know whether the categories are similarly defined or not, or how the needs may justify that anomaly, or those anomalies. But I think that's the sort of question, whether I'm on this study committee or others, that should be asked, because to the extent that we can adjut, make adjustments, and I know we can't tell the schools how to spend their funds, but we can tell them, the selectmen and the, the town meeting for that matter, what the pot, the size of the pot shall be. The school budget has not been scrutinized with the same level of care that used to be the case since the days of the town-school partnership. That's true on the advisory committee. I've talked about this before. And I'm not saying the town-school partnership has no value by any means, it does. But what's lost is the nitty-gritty comparison that could have been made and that would have been made and that was made in the days when the school budget, in fact, was in play, rather than being largely determined by, by the town-school partnership agreement. The very first thing of substance I did on the advisory committee back in 1986 was see that a particular expenditure that the schools had requested for $150,000 was something that no other city or town felt they needed to do. It was a kind of a reserve that the other cities and towns felt was unnecessary to make up for a, a, a lack of state, of state support for the out-of-district placements. I don't want to go in too deeply in this, but with, I would say, under my leadership, we cut $150,000 out of that, out of the bottom line of that budget. And the school committee did indeed take that expenditure. That's how they, they, they understood why we were cutting it, and they cut it. Well, I think that as we approach an override, that sort of stuff, that sort of detailed examination needs to be made for anything that comes before a general override. And let me say that although we're talking largely about schools, I can see other needs, too, which might want to be folded in. We're taking on more upkeep responsibilities at the Reservoir Park. We're taking on possibly additional responsibilities, depending on how the diversity committee decides, and how the town decides, to deal with the diversity issue. Will we reestablish a department? I don't know. But I think it would be a good idea not to have a whole series of operating budget overrides. We may need more than one, but we should look at more than necessarily the school budget, I, I would think, if other needs seem to be timely and pressing. So in answer to Sleitman Banker's question, I think one of the things that I would like to do if I were on this committee is play a role in examining assumptions and assertions as to needs and make sure that, that they are commensurate with benchmark communities and are defensible, and they may very well be. I want to keep throwing that caveat in. This is not an indictment of, of the school budget, it's simply a, a flag that was raised by a very peripheral look at data provided by this interstate website. I guess I've talked a lot and I, I think I should let, let you have your turn, it's getting late, and by all means.
Okay. Are there any questions left that have not been answered?
You've answered my question.
Sleitman Goldstein.
I answered my question as well.
Well, I got a, I got a question. So, and it's, it's a question I've been asking, but it's a little different with you, Stanley, because I, I, if I can try to define your bias for a second, I think you have a bias for skepticism. I think that you are one of the most critical thinkers of anybody that I know. And I think you're exceptionally good at it, and you're exceptionally fine assets of the town in your ability to, to tear apart a, a, solutions that sometimes don't have problems to go with them. This is a, this is a, I see as, as a, a problem that is a problem and doesn't have a solution. So I'll ask you, and by the way, I follow, you know, the comments on, on the TMMA site, and you've been really good about, you know, not letting people get carried away with one particular viewpoint in the early goings here.
I talked to you just today about a line in the sand being, that's on the TMMA, as being, I think-
Yes.
-that ain't the way to govern.
That's exactly right.
I think that's the Tea Party way, that's the-
I appreciate that.
The Volker Norquist way, it's not, it shouldn't be our way.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Having said that, you followed the debate, I see you sitting here at, at a lot of the B-Space hearings, and based on what you've heard so far, do you think we have a problem? And do you think we have a, a likely solution?
Well, I certainly favor walkability, if that to the maximal degree possible. I think of kids and who are 10, 11 years old being able to walk home from school when both their parents are working. So that would be high on my list. But frankly, you know, you render Caesar, what Caesar's? There's a school committee, is, is a committee which really should weigh in on the educational model. I don't feel qualified, I don't know that B-Space is qualified to do that, and certainly the override study committee. It's not our, it would not be the task of that committee to weigh in. I, I do have a preference for walkability myself. I've heard wonderful things about the K to eight model, I say that not only because it's, I speak to my wife a lot, and, and she's a big fan of K to eight, but again, it's not the only model. The point is that whatever comes out of B-Space and then the, the school committee, there surely will be a, a debt exclusion that's gonna be necessary, and, and to some extent, at least, an operating budget. And it's our job to make it be as acceptable to the people of this town as can be. And I think that's the key thing, knowing the politics of the town, knowing how hard it is to craft a successful override, knowing that wish lists don't cut it, because even though enrollments in schools may have gone up 25%, our population has only gone up 3%. And that means that you have fewer people to fund a larger school system, relatively speaking, the persons are not inexhaustible. There is technology now that can be used, perhaps, there are other imaginative ways of dealing with it, but that's, again, we, under the override study committee, will have to deal with what's offered to us and try to make the best case for getting as much of it done as makes sense. And then the selectmen are the ultimate arbiters, because that's your task, as you know, under, under Prop 2 and 1/2. You guys are the ones who figure out what's good for the, not only what might pass, but what makes sense so that you don't squeeze people out of town who cost here in the mur or maybe can't afford it. I mean, you have to, that's really your task, but it's, I think it would be my role to try to see how we can minimize the impact on the entire town by coming up with a defensible and certainly not extravagant override proposal. And it's a tough job, I think, and I, and I'm retired, so I do have time. I've written a column for the TAB for years, I've taken controversial positions in the past. I'm not crazy about it, but I'm used to it, you know, what the heck. A little, a little single malt at the end of the day and problems disappear.
Okay. On that note, any other questions? I, I think you've pretty much covered the territory.
Hope I didn't take too much time, and I thank you for the time.
And thank you for your willingness to continue after so many years.
Thank you. Take care. Be well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Srinivasan. I appreciate your patience and I, all I can say is I hope that your opportunity to hear every other person speak has helped rather than put you to sleep.
No problem, no problem. I appreciate your patience and time. I feel sitting through the, the whole night, not only is the town spoiled for choice with good candidates, but I'm very appreciative of your decision to take a list of 30-odd candidates and actually spend your nights interviewing each of us in person rather than vetting at first. So that's, that's another way we're very lucky as a town.
Thank you.
That's a big commitment. So I, I know you have a biography of me, I, I'm trying to think about what might not be on it. I, I moved to the town six years ago. My path was paved by in-laws who've been here for, for 40 consecutive years, and a wife and a sister-in-law who are both BHS graduates and came up all the way through the system. I have a daughter who's in Driscoll and a son who just started SOUL, and I'm here out of my own interest to serve and also the nomination of my block. We'll see if, how happy I am about that. Pick me. You know, you, you posed some questions, I'm sure you'll ask me some other ones. I was trying to think about how to distill what I think I might be able to bring. You know, I've had the chance to work in a number of management, investment and analytical roles over my career. I've had a chance to serve on a good number of public boards and private boards. And along with that has come a chance to see organizations, you know, at, at either their finest or worst hour, is inevitably when you, when you, when you have to bear down the hardest. You know, whether staying company public, selling it, making a bet the company decision, dealing with, you know, a boardroom insurrection, dealing with a bankruptcy. There's a, there's a large panoply of stuff, and, you know, what I think that has relevance to something like this is that inevitably it's not a decision between something good and something bad. Those are, those are things we can, you know, deal with, with great expediency. It's the ones where you're choosing between two different goods or two different bads that, you know, require a lot of nuance, require a lot of analysis, and, you know, I think this committee is one of the, is instance which, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a tough role. I think, you know, as, as chairpersons and whoever you choose on the committee, there, whatever you choose, whatever path you take, there's gonna be serious recriminations. I mean, that's, that's kind of a guarantee. And I think the only effective inoculation against that is trying to frame clear questions, trying to figure out pathways that, that, you know, finding information, analytical pathways, that can help you form fact-based decisions that can then be promulgated and communicated, so that even if there isn't consensus around the decision, there's, there's clarity about how the process worked and why people got what they were, what they did. And I think, you know, one of the neat things about democracy generally is that I think people, when they see the result, can feel comfortable because they understand how the process worked. And I think that's one of the real challenges here, is not only getting to the right answer, but doing it in a way where you have a committee armed with skill sets and inclinations to do the spade work, so that what's returned to the town is something that people can understand, even if they don't love it. No one loves cough syrup, but we all understand that sometimes we need to take it. And, you know, but no one's, no one's signing up for it just for kicks. So those are the kind of things that come to mind as I think about the process this committee will embark on. I hope that's helpful starting point.
Sure.
Great.
Sleitman Goldstein.
I'll ask you about what kind of precognitions you have about, about the process, the solution? I changed the words around a little bit. I like to keep you guessing. It's hard after 12 to find new ways of phrasing the question, but you're, I assume, a Driscoll parent?
If you've got precognition, you would have known that you would have changed why the question was worth it.
Your Driscoll parent, a, a lot of the solutions that are being considered right now might hinge on Driscoll. How do you, how do you balance what, what's in your own self, the interest of your family versus the, the greater vision that you might see?
Well, you know, look, I think, I think, oh, this is a decision that's bigger than any one set of parents, any one, any one school, and, and it's gonna have to stand on that way. And if it's, you know, I think if we approach it on that kind of fractured basis, it's, it's gonna lack the credibility to work for everybody.
Hey, I'll put a final point. You, you mentioned that you, your block kind of elected you to do this. So are you coming here because you're representing the, not that it's, not that it's a negative if you are, but are you coming here as a representative of the Salisbury Road community, the Driscoll community, the, the, the community at large?
Well, it's, it's a fair question. No, it's because, I think, I think that actually the nomination comes from the fact that they know that I'm, they trust me to kind of be good at, at trying to work out the problem, not to come with, you know, as a, as a banner bearer for the interests of, of one, one, you know, small block. You know, they are, they, like me, are people who've, who've obviously chosen to be here voluntarily and want to come, came to the town, not the block, for the things that they held in esteem about the town. And they want to see that furthered, you know, and, and I think we all know that whatever, whatever changes come, all roads, you know- whatever changes come, all roads, you know, lead to the same, you know, the same educational pathway and, you know, I think that's the spirit which was, it was, my arm was twisted. But, you know, I think in terms of biases, look, again, I think it is about, you know, I'll tell you what my biases are in terms of trying to do work like this, and it's to be forthright and analytical and to really spend some time phrasing what we think the questions are that we need to answer, getting buy-in, that those are the things that if we answer them successfully will lead us to a reasonable set of conclusions. And then figuring out how we're going to get it done and, and, and again, doing the spade work. I think, you know, you guys probably hear a lot of discussion and would probably like to see more, more, more detail. And I think that often when you have that in front of you, the decision becomes fairly obvious.
Good. Thank you.
Slakman Venka.
Thank you. I think you've probably touched on my question, but I want to give you an opportunity to expand on your answer, and that is, are there any particular issues or issue, any issues or questions that you might want to carve out that would fit your interests and your expertise if you were a member of this committee?
You know, I probably want to turn it around a little bit. I, you know, as co-chair, you know, you'll probably guide our hand in how we should take a first crack at what the agenda should be. And I don't, I have no interest in front-running that. Nor do I, you know, I, that's, I think what I can answer you with is what I think I can bring in terms of skill sets. And I think is ability to do analysis, ability to, you know, having, you know, authored, evaluated, motion seconded, torn apart, all kinds of budgets and capital plans. I think I have a fair amount of familiarity and experience in understanding them, understanding what questions to ask that may not be readily apparent, you know, that require something that isn't on the page. And, you know, I think those are the kind of ways and also, you know, willingness to carve out time outside of committee time to do work, you know, what, how other towns that face the challenges we do, answer them. What can we learn there? What, what, what analysis about our own town is worth undertaking that could guide our hand and hopefully can contribute in getting that done. Thank you.
Slakman Daly.
Yeah, when you were describing your, who, who had sort of solicited you to, to apply, it was kind of, it sounded like it was probably other parents with kids. And so I wondered if you'd been hearing at all from some of the older people that might be worried about their tax burden or even in your neighborhood, you might have some of the religious orthodox that send their kids to private schools and so they're sort of feeling like, you know, well, why should I go for this? Were you hearing from any of them at all or really more your?
Yeah, our block is pretty split between, you know, people who have no kids or kids who have grown and left, left their, their, their parents and new families who've come in. You know, I, I don't, and there are divergent interests. But again, I kind of feel that, you know, everyone wants to get to a good answer. I mean, you know, if we, like I said, whatever we're going to do, there's going to be recriminations and there're going to be what-ifs and why not that? And, and I think most of them, they're, you know, they're well-educated, they're well-meaning people who are busy and in many ways like me, haven't had a chance to get their arms around all the facts. And I think if we can deliver a result to them that is decision and also can help explain, you know, the pathway for them to follow why this group reached the decision it did, that will, that will go a long way to, to, you know, unanimity or equanimity with whatever the result is.
Okay, Slakman Wyszynski.
How do you feel about getting into the public eye?
You know, I, not in this context, not in this way, but I think I have some experience with that. And, you know, I'm eager to, you know, also ask a question about time. And this is another, this is another way, you know, exposure in terms of taking away from other things you're doing, exposure in terms of wanted or unwanted publicity are in some ways related in my mind. But, you know, they're both things I considered before applying and decided that, you know, that was commitments I was ready to, to make.
And your schedule from that side?
I tend to make the time.
All right. Well, I've been asking people what they know about Proposition Two and a Half and tax limitation legislation, and I'm just wondering what, if any, thoughts you have on that subject.
Look, you know, I, I'm moderately familiar with, with the Massachusetts law. I grew up in New Jersey, which is in some ways infamous for high property taxes. You know, spent time in California where they have, they have their own solutions.
That's right. We learned from California apparently.
And, you know, look, it's a complicated set of problems, you know. We're talking about taking other people's money and everyone's money. And hopefully we're doing it for good reasons or considering doing it for good reasons. And I think that, you know, it's tough because in almost every last bunch of our lives, we all get to choose what plate of goods and services we want, you know, except for, except for the public sector. And I think the best thing we can do in terms of service to ourselves and service to everyone here we're in the boat with is to, you know, bring it up, bring in analytic mind, an open mind to answering, is this something that is such a high priority, we're willing to make those trade-offs? And understand what the costs are and, and, you know, try and educate people why we real, why we got to where we did. Like I said before, it's, it strikes me as a good versus good type decision. And, you know, we, we want education, we want affordability. And so we now have a tough, a tough walk to, tight rope to walk.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other follow-ups, members?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for waiting to the very end. We appreciate your patience and we certainly do appreciate your willingness to be a volunteer. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe Mr. Petz got called away. Sorry about that, but I think he has not returned to us. So I think that actually is the last interview we have before us. And we now have a few minutes to discuss how we will go forward with a process to identify the folks who can be appointed to this entity. And I think we were hoping, Slakman Venka, that you could give us at least some guidance, perhaps with your co-chair who is still with us.
Yes, I was going to, I was going to say, I wonder, I would like to ask both of them how many we can choose, because there's an awful lot of great people here. So I, I.
Have you had a chance to think about it? And I, I don't want to put you on the spot other than to say for sure, between now and the time we make the appointments, we've got to have a number.
Well, I, I, Susan Wolf Ditkoff is the co-chair and we had talked about appointing nine or eleven additional members of the override study committee. I will say that that discussion occurred before we saw how many qualified applicants there were, but that, those are the numbers that we have discussed.
I'm up to wanting thirteen, I'll just say that. With plus you two.
I think one of our overriding, thank you, Madam Chairman, I think the overriding concern was having a committee of manageable size. And despite the fact that there are many, many qualified candidates, there are probably more than we can appoint anyway. And so I think we want to make sure that this is a committee where people will show up at, for every meeting and will do work in between the meetings and that we not have a different group at every single meeting, which loses continuity and momentum. So there is something to be said for cohesion and tightness and creating the right culture of inquiry and collegiality. So there is something about a manageable number, as Mr. Venka said.
So what is that manageable number?
So that would be eleven plus two or nine plus two.
And I, and I'm certainly, if the choice is between those two, I'm at this point inclined to the larger group. I know that some people have talked about a committee of thirteen being problematical, but that doesn't bother me.
I've served on many of them. We're all, we're all survivors.
Were you superstitious, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, and that is not, is not a concern.
But just having heard Susan's thoughts on unmanageable committees, maybe thirteen is too large. There were certainly so many fabulous people.
I'm going to make the argument that this is going to be, and I, I think I can see it just from my experience, both on the advisory committee, which by the way is thirty, just to let folks know. Up to thirty. It has been, its membership often hovers around twenty-five, between twenty-five and thirty, right? So it is manageable to have a larger group. And if it's organized into subgroups who have specific assigned tasks and you have a tight deadline, I urge people to be willing to consider that if your subgroups can get together and do their tasks, a larger number may be in your interest, but that's not my call.
It's certainly, I think it's certainly worth considering. We, we have talked about the types of expertise that should be on this committee and we've discussed, and indeed this, these, as, as we sit down and members of the board sit down and now that we've finished the interviews, look at the, the candidates and look back at, at the interviews that we've had, perhaps a number will emerge as we try to put people into, into slots. We've talked about individuals with expertise in education and education administration, individuals with expertise and background in finance, including municipal finance and management, individuals with expertise in modeling, economic modeling, financial modeling, individuals with expertise in architecture, construction management. And I, I think, I think, you know, those categories and, you know, as we go forward, we might expand that. And just to use Susan's word, overlaying these skills, Susan has said that we should have a committee that looks like the town. And, and also a committee that will approach this with a spirit of inquiry rather than advocacy. And I think what that means, and frankly, we've heard it from a number of the candidates, that they're, they are willing to ask questions and not make assumptions. And I think the committee should include parents and non-parents, it should include those whose particular concern is the schools and those who are concerned about tax burdens. Because I think with that sort of representation of the interests of the town, I think we're most likely to arrive at a, at a outcome and a recommendation that will be acceptable to the broadest community in the town. And I, Susan.
No, no, you stole my best lines, Slakman Venka. So I think I'm a hundred percent.
But I attributed them.
A hundred percent.
Wow, this is very good. The auspices for the committee that the two of you are in a hundred percent agreement.
Yeah, I think we've got the collegiality thing.
Yeah, that's right.
That's good.
Now, if you can just get that precognition.
I, I would add a mix of some experience with newcomers to the overall process.
Boy, do I ever see this as an opportunity.
I think that's sort of emerging as we've talked to people. I think there are individuals who, who have experience in the town and I think they're important, but also people who bring fresh eyes.
Right, but the committee shouldn't be entirely of people who've been involved.
Exactly.
Sure, I, I actually would say that this is a wonderful opportunity to have some fresh voices and thoughts who would contribute and also learn from some folks who've been around for a while and can be mentors and, you know, share their historic perspective. But tough choices. Well, we're going to, we're going to be faced with actual decisions next week. So it seems to me that we've got a little time to think through if there are any other, let's call it, thoughts on procedures. We really would need to have something distributed to select people by Friday, if you have more thoughts about that. So, and I think selectmen are allowed to contribute also, so if any, any, anyone amongst us has thoughts.
I'd suggest some kind of a scoring system, you know, one through five points and total them all up. And by the way, I would really invite Ms. Ditkoff to give us her input too. She's going to have to work with this committee.
Oh, yeah, I, I think so. I mean, if we were to, if we were to do that, then I would want her, her to be a participant equally.
Sure, well, I'm not an equal participant, thank you, I appreciate it. This is a selectman's role and I'm respectful of that. I'm happy to provide any input.
Right, but if you, if you have some ideas about.
Yeah, no, just to, you know, just to echo Slakman Venka's thoughts, I think the idea of having some categories and saying, here are the places where we really would like some expertise, so that even if someone doesn't hit across, I don't expect candidates to hit across all four, but if we can almost say, here are the top two or three thinkers or the top two or three folks' personalities or in, in the different categories and then rebalance as necessary, that might be a helpful way to think about it.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful, right.
And again, with the overlays of making sure that we look like the town, that we represent the, in all of the different ways that word diversity can be used, of experiences, backgrounds, et cetera. Gender, ethnicity, everything, it would be helpful.
Okay, well, I think this is something that we all need to think about and I hope at least to get some guidance from the co-chairs over the next several days. And for that matter, I would say if people have thoughts and you want to give them to me, we cannot do this collectively as a deliberative process, but I would welcome suggestions that I can ask Mel to consolidate and recirculate.
I, I would, I would suggest that this is a process that, this, this is not going to be a process, this is a process unlike any other that we've had in terms of making appointments. This is not a situation where there's, where there are even two people for one position or three people for two positions. There are thirty, and I, at this point I've lost count.
Thirty for eleven.
Yeah, thirty.
Plus.
Plus for eleven or whatever. And, you know, our traditional way of voting for individuals just doesn't work here.
I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it can be used. I think it's inappropriate.
So I think, I think this, this is an issue where the town administrator is going to be very important in trying to bring some clarity to, and focus to this in a way that we can't. I mean, certainly the co-chairs can, can, can be involved in this, but as a board, given the open meeting law, we really cannot do this offline. So I think guidance from the town administrator is going to be very useful here.
Well, if we follow Slakman Goldstein's suggestion, maybe you want to send out a scoring sheet to us and we would assign numbers one through five or whatever you decide on to each candidate. And in public, open meeting, we would then, the town administrator could tally those.
I think it's a question as to whether or not those individual sheets would be themselves public records.
If they are, they are.
Yeah, if they are.
Yeah, they are, in the end.
They probably are, yeah. But, I mean, we're, I'm just trying to.
Well, let's, let's think about it.
Or we could just go through the names and say.
Yeah.
But, but people would have to restrict themselves. If you say eleven, people can only vote for eleven. They'd have to not.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
I certainly have a lot more than eleven I'd like to vote for.
I think, I think it would be useful perhaps to, to start thinking about the, for, for the town administrator to start thinking about the categories and individuals who might fit into those areas of expertise and maybe go from there. into those areas of expertise and maybe go from there.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting question of whether or not, if we do, if there is agreement in an open session on some of the major categories that we're looking for, then that is something you could deliberate in public and decide that those are the categories you're looking for, and then potentially see whether or not individuals fit into those categories. And you could, it might, it might be using the town administrator's role as well, but just that might help, so you're not, we're not trying to grapple with a list of 30, is my point, which I think might be unwieldy.
Well, that I think is why Selectman Goldstein suggested some, some form of ranking. And, you know, there, I've had some different thoughts about this, but there is actually something that we might look at, and I'll see if I can dig it out and send it around, which is literally the way we evaluate our administrators, as does the school committee, with a sort of categories where you can rank, in other words, if we had a set of qualifications and each one got sort of a rank in each qualification, so if there are five, we would know that some people were twos and some people were fives in a particular category, that might be helpful. And it's a broader way of doing it than just choosing one, two, three, four, this for one person.
I mean, my concern about that, though, is there may be, for instance, I think you sort of mentioned, you know, having someone who, I'll call them a tax skeptic, you know, do you, you know, you may want to fill that role, and obviously, they would probably be also a expert in modeling or finance, you know, so that you may, you know, if you want, or you want to have someone who's very familiar with town politics, for instance, and may understand what kind of, you know, recommendation is likely to meet with favor from the voters. I mean, those are the kind of things that might get lost in a strictly.
I think that's right.
Kind of, if you set up criteria, you're not going to say.
You're right, those would get lost.
Those things would get lost.
The way to address, if you want to do it on that basis, you'd have to do slates, I think. I think you'd have to pick, you know, suggested slates of people that somebody nominates. So you could, everybody could nominate a slate and could say why they think this slate is a good balance and why they're in favor of it, and then you could vote it by slate. I'm not advocating for it. I think, I prefer the balloting method, whether it's public or private.
I suspect there's going to be, there's going to be a core group we will all agree on, and then from there, we're going to have our, you know, people we know and feel confident in personally, maybe, that we would like to favor, that others wouldn't feel the same way about, that kind of thing, so.
Are there any lessons from, say, past override committee appointments, say in 2008, or any big committees?
The last one, I think, was not.
Was recruited in a very different way, and certainly there weren't.
People were picked and asked to be on it. It wasn't a big, open interview process.
Right. This is really extraordinary in terms of the number of folks who've come forward, who, many, many of whom have very good qualifications.
And other committees that have been formed recently have essentially not been formed in this way.
Right, right. I mean, this is a fabulous example of what happens when you put out a call and people come forward and are willing to take on this task and the responsibilities, and at the same time, we have to select from among them, so. But I do think that if people have thoughts, you've probably got a couple of days to get them articulated, because we, if we're going to be making those appointments on Tuesday, we're going to run out of time. And I believe our town administrator, who's being asked to help us through this process, would like to comment.
That's one of the reasons I want to, I want to speak up. But first of all, I do think that.
He's going away, by the way.
Yes, that's what I want to say. One of the things that I think would be helpful is to break it up into categories of sort of qualifications or characteristics, because first of all, I think that's as objective as we can get in this process, is, you know, try to identify without thinking about particular people, qualities first. So I like that idea. I also think, as Susan said, it sort of makes the job a little easier, it breaks it down to a little bit more smaller tasks, because it feels very daunting to pick nine or so people out of 31 or so. So I think that's a good idea, and I have been playing around with that a little bit, but as you pointed out, I am going to be taking off for the rest of the week. I haven't had any time yet this summer, so I can't change that. I can probably start working on it on Sunday.
Well, Sunday gives you two days before Tuesday.
The only last bright spot I would offer is that in the wording of the charge, the qualifications were sort of listed there, so it's not like this is an ex post facto imposition of qualifications. They were right there when people were interviewing.
Sure. And I would suggest that one thing we could all do, and I think I would be willing to facilitate this, if people can give me a set of qualifications, I can at least organize it in some sort of orderly fashion. If I get three people with one thing, then I can certainly consolidate it that way and pass it on to Mel when he's available on Sunday, and I would certainly be happy to take on that responsibility if people would be willing to do that. But then eventually, I'm going to turn it over to him.
What time on Sunday?
Yeah.
Lost my wife.
Right. Okay, well, I believe.
So you're getting a whole four days of summer vacation?
No, I'm going to take some more time later this month.
Oh, okay. Well, we hope that we're, I would say personally, and I guess this is also another thing for people to be really clear about, we are not now planning to meet on the 20th or the 27th, providing we get through all of the workload that has to be done on the 13th, and that means making these appointments.
And.
And we have a 40B hearing on the night of the 13th, so it's going to be a busy night. Maybe we will start at 4 o'clock. I would say actually, everybody should be prepared for the 13th, to be a long night with an early start.
All right, good.
Okay? All right, then I believe this concludes the business of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, August 6th.